Good evening. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number twenty dash A sixteen and ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID nineteen disaster. Opportunities for public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on www.albemoral.org when available. I'm Charles Rapp. I am playing director and as tonight is our election evening, I will be leading tonight's meeting. So go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please note that all planning commission commissioners are attending this meeting virtually. We can go ahead and call the roll. Mr. Bailey.
President.
Mr. Keller.
Present.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Randolph.
Present.
Mr. Bivens.
Present.
Ms. Moore.
Present.
Clayborne.
There.
And Mr. Carazana. Mr. Carazana is not present, but all other members are here. All right. Tonight, first on our agenda is the election of officers for the upcoming year. Believe we've had a great run with Mr. Bivens over the past year, but I'll throw it out there to see if anyone has any nominations for chair for the upcoming year.
Go ahead, Rick.
I would like to nominate Julian Bivens to be chair of the planning commission for the year twenty twenty one.
And I would like to second.
Any discussion on that or other nominations? All right. Shall we have a vote? There's a motion for Mr. Bivens to continue serving in his role as chair. Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Clayborne. And Mr. Bivens.
I guess I abstain.
There you go. Well, congratulations, Chair Bivens. You have been elected once again. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your confidence and hopefully we will see each other in twenty twenty one on the dais. Although I like being in Zoom land, although I've been told I can't call us. I like being in Zoom land. But I'll just leave it at that. Can we move to a nomination for vice chair, please?
Sure. I'd like to nominate Karen Firehawk.
We have a nomination and we have a second with Mr. Keller? Or is there any discussion? Are there any other nominations?
Just wanted to make the statement. I'm happy to serve as vice chair, but if anyone else would like to be vice chair and serve honorably with our current chair, that would be fine by me. It's not something I'm clamoring for, but it's something I'm happy to do. So if anyone else wants to do this, it's good training for the future, especially if you aspire to chairship.
Is there any additional conversation? Are there other nominations? Hearing none. Close this nomination for vice chair with the vice chair being Karen Firehawk. And would you please call the roll, sir?
Mr. Clayborne.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome back. Moving to item number three, can we have, can we look at our procedures, the procedures and policies for the, for our commission? And Mr. Rapp, is there anything that you'd like to tell us about changes or potential changes that have been made there?
No changes. These are somewhat new to me as this is my first year guiding you through these rules of procedure. But the only, only item that we did discuss with legal counsel was if we should remove the year to it so that these two remain.
And just adopt them on an annual basis?
Yep. That way they are not year specific.
So the thing before us then, folks, is if we can strike the year, the year twenty 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 one and just have it read, the Albemarle County Planning Commission Rules of Procedures, and then they can be, they can also be modified and changed as we need since we have no prohibitions from doing that during the rest of the rest of calendar year. So what's before us is a motion, oh, what's before us to be moved is a motion to accept our, our rules and procedures striking twenty twenty one. Karen, is that a, is that a, is that a move?
Um, I'm happy to do that. I was trying to adjust my light. That's fine too.
Don't lift your hands tonight, folks. We're moving. Is there a sec? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Corey. Is there any additional conversation on this? Sir, would you?
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Clayborne.
Hi.
All right. We'll make that minor change.
So do you want to talk to us about our committee membership, realizing that under the place, under the, that we need to have a fifth and Avon ACA added to the list of which I'm going to be presumptuous, but Karen and Rick will be the ones who are, who are the liaisons to that.
It was, and I think it was actually staff went ahead and made that adjustment when Commissioner Firehawk pointed that out. So they have been at the top of the list now.
There we are.
Still have one vacancy for our long range school planning liaison that was previously held by Bruce Dodson. So I'm not sure if anyone has a burning desire.
Well, I see everybody, you know, everyone is, you know, it's like, it's like your puppy. Those of you who have dogs, when you, when the dog knows that it's done something oddly, it always looks away. Have you ever noticed that? You're just like, oh, really? You did that? And they all just sort of like, hmm, I don't know who you're talking to. You're not talking to me. You must be talking to somebody else. This is the most amazing thing.
We do discuss schools quite often.
A lot.
Commission. So this is, this is an important role.
So here's what I would, here's, here, you know, we're getting some, I would be willing to step off the MPO tech and step onto this. In the full disclosure, I'm on something called a long range budget committee that's been appointed by the, by the school, by Matt. And so that would be a nice nexus for me if somebody would like to take the MPO tech. Gee, that wasn't.
Well, I mean, how, one thing to think about could be equity. I mean, I'm already on three committees. How many is everyone else? I mean.
Clearly.
I would be glad to do it, but it would be moving out of C-TAC. And basically, we get the same information at both of those two meetings.
I think you'd have an interesting input at MPO tech. Are you, are you talking about you want to go to the school board?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I will say that the C-TAC meetings are not honorous. They're four year and they're at seven o'clock in the evening on Wednesday. I can't remember which day of the month. So basically, it's a, it's a two to three hour commitment four times.
I'm happy to cover down on something, but I would ask if that were the case, that maybe an outgoing commissioner would educate me on what is necessary to be the liaison of something like C-TAC.
Would you be willing to do that?
Do that.
Okay. So, and so Tim's going to take over the MPO tech and Daniel's going to take over C-TAC. And then I'll move over to the long range school planning liaison position if that's, if no one else wanted to step into that, like Jenny or Jenny's got this look up, I'll strangle you, Julian. I know that look.
And Corey, you actually went to a meeting that I didn't, and I went to a meeting that you didn't, but we're both the Ryvanna River Porter Steering Committee, and that's another one that's not terribly honorous. But you're not showing up on the list, at least my list.
And there was. Yeah. So we need to get him on there too.
Yeah, I've attended the, the most recent couple that we've had. So.
Yes, sir. Okay. When you add you to that.
And Tim, there's a, there's a meeting next week, but I'll send you the information on that. Okay?
Okay, thanks. And in case there's a cross up. Daniel, I will send you the information on C-TAC when I get, when I get an announcement of the next meeting.
So we need to accept this as our twenty twenty one committee membership. Is there a motion to do so?
Um, before you do that, I just had one comment and I didn't print it out and it wasn't in my packet, but I looked at it and I, for the ACEA, um, I think it listed me as my, my term, it's not a voting member, and I think it had my term ending in December of twenty twenty. Is that what it says?
Correct.
Yes, it says that.
I reapplied and was reap, reappointed to that as a voting member. And I think it's for, Andy might know, but I think it's for three years.
Okay. So you're saying it's through twenty twenty three now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, you know, that doesn't stop anyone else from being the liaison, but I'm there as Bruce was a member. And when he stepped away from that to do other things, I took that over and at the request of the group, I became a voting member. So I'm happy to keep doing that. I just wanted to change that date to reflect my reappointment.
Okay.
Get that updated.
That's all I had to add.
Thank you. So is there, is there, is someone will move our acceptance with those modifications as modified for our planning commission membership as of one six twenty twenty one?
Tim has his hand up.
Tim, is that, are you moving?
I'm moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Jenny? Is there further discussion? Please, sir?
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Yes.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
And Mr. Clayborne. I will get a updated list. We'll update this list and I'll send it out to everybody. So you have it for your records.
So our final piece of housekeeping then is you receive the twenty twenty one planning commission meeting schedule and which has us meeting or as noted typically every Tuesday, except for, for when we don't have anything on our calendar, like the next two weeks. And I wondered if everyone had an opportunity to look at it. And if so, can we adopt this with the reminder that if, when we break and or if you have something else to do that takes you away to let us know so that we know to expect you either later or not expect you at all, just as a, so that we're not wondering whether or not we are. So is there someone who would move the acceptance of our planning commission meeting schedule? Is that you, Rick? Or did you just scratch?
Is this just for February?
No, it's, it was the two pager.
Right.
It was our, our two pager. It looked like this.
It's got all the tentative dates for twenty twenty one.
You okay?
Having allergies, ignore me.
Okay. Do you have some, get some water if you can. So is somebody willing to move this?
I'll be happy to move it.
Is there a second? Second in by Corey. Is there any discussion? Sir?
All right. Mr. Clayborne. Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
I will send out that for your records as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Should we note for any members of the public who may be looking at that, that there will be no planning commission meetings the next two weeks?
Yes, we're going to do that now. We're going to do it at the end, at the end of it. And so the intention is we'll come back on ground hall day.
Okay.
On February second. So that you'll see that. We have nothing in the consent for consent agenda this evening. So we'll move into our first work session this evening. Oh, how sweet. How old, Daniel?
Three. Not very happy about me being here instead of there.
Oh, got it. Well, we'll see what we can do about that. Our first, our first work session today is ETA twenty nineteen zero eight, section thirty three zoning text amendment, zoning and zoning map, zoning map amendments, special use permits and special exceptions. May we hear from Mr. Fritz on this, please?
Yes, and happy to be with you in twenty twenty one. Put twenty twenty behind us. I know everybody's happy about that. I'm also going to try to start off this year by not boring you with a PowerPoint presentation. Would just be a lot of words. So I was just going to speak to you and try to get your feedback so that we can improve where we need to, the zoning text amendment. This will also be going to before the Board of Supervisors for work session. And that happens in February seventeenth, and then it'll come back to you for a public hearing and of course, the Board of Supervisors. So you'll, you'll get to see this at least one more time, but we just want to try to work out any kinks at this time. So what this is, is a proposed zoning text amendment. And what it does is it corrects some of the unintended impacts caused by the amendments that were adopted in twenty eighteen. It tries to improve the submittal and review process, correct many technical errors that are in the existing ordinance, bring us into compliance with the state code. It also removes requirements that applications must be acted on within thirty six months or the project is deemed withdrawn. That's part of the procedural improvements that were proposed. So what happened in twenty eighteen is the ordinance was amendment and was amended and that amendment was necessary. Obviously, we don't amend the ordinance if it isn't necessary. It was to fix some deficiencies in the ordinance and to approve the process. Unfortunately, the twenty eighteen amendments did not have the desired effect in terms of improving the process. In fact, we have found that the administration of the ordinance has been extremely complex and has been resource consumptive. So it's had actually the opposite impact of what we wanted. There was some support to simply repeal the twenty eighteen amendments and revert to the prior ordinance. But as I said before, there was a reason that we got rid of the twenty eighteen ordinance and amended it. So we haven't done that. So simply reverting to the twenty eighteen or the prior ordinance would still leave the need to amend the ordinance again. So this ordinance tries to keep the things that the twenty eighteen ordinance did and, and were helpful and productive and fix the things that were not. So one of the things that happened in the twenty eighteen amendment, for example, is we removed the provision that allowed for public submittal of zoning text amendments. It's worked. It's fine. It's there. There's no change in that process. Reorganization. The proposed amendment does substantially reorganize the procedural provisions within the ordinance. It does not restore the process to the pre twenty eighteen issue, but it builds on the lessons that we've learned. One of the things that we did was the time limits for actions. The, this was a major issue in the twenty eighteen amendments. At that time, a thirty six month time limit was created. So everything had to be acted on within thirty six months. The process involved with this time limit, the processing involved with this time limit is very complex and has created a significant administrative burden. The proposed amendment removes the time limit and replaces it with a clear statement that the county is not obligated to accept a request for deferral. That puts the county very much in the driver's seat is to win its time to act on it. So if it needs to go longer, it can go longer. If it's just time for it to be heard, it's time for it to be heard. The proposed amendment also clarifies the procedure for reactivating applications and review of applications when in a stated deferral. Currently, a deferred application is not to be reviewed. That's part of the procedural problems that we have. This is often the primary purpose of deferral. It's to allow issues to be identified and addressed. The proposed ordinance provides that once a deferred application, that the deferral only is for the public hearing, not for the review. The proposed ordinance provides that once a deferred application is reactivated, the timeline for review is reset. So they can't, they can't request deferral on day eighty nine and then say, you only have a day to act and be within the ninety day deadline. This fixes that, that potential problem. The current ordinance creates significant procedural difficulties because the timelines for deferred actions is not clear. The proposed ordinance allows for the collection of a new fee for a reactivated application. That sometimes reactivated applications are substantially different than what they were originally, so much so that they constitute a new application. And we could collect a new fee to cover the cost of that review. The proposed ordinance provides that an application is deemed withdrawn, a deferral request is accepted, and the project is not reactivated within six months. This will allow the county to more easily administer the process and prevent applications from languishing. The submittal requirements, the twenty eighteen amendments modified the submittal requirements and allowed the planning director to determine some information not be, may not be required in certain applications. The proposed amendments retain the submittal requirements and clarify the process, processes for determining what information is required. The twenty eighteen amendments allowed for electronical, electronic filings. That's retained. The twenty eighteen amendments, another significant change was the notice of easement holders, certain easement holders on a property. So for example, an open space easement, if an application was submitted on that property for zoning text amendment, especially, excuse me, rezoning, special use permit, there was no notice to that, to the easement holder. That was added and that provision is retained. The rejection of incomplete applications, that's been a problem, a problematic process. It's, it was not implemented in a way that made it easy to do, and it has some problems. The proposed amendment clarifies the timelines for when a application is determined incomplete. It actually adds a provision to notify the applicant that their application has been deemed incomplete. It allows for the collection of fees. So it states how you collect the fees when you determine that an application is incomplete. That doesn't exist in the existing ordinance. And it establishes the start date to calculate the time of review so that you can't use the original submittal date as your starting date. It's when you actually do get the application correct. So this, this corrects that problem. State code has been, the twenty eighteen amendment corrected some state code provisions, but since then, there have been some other state code changes to the proffers, and this fixes that. The revocation of special exceptions, the twenty eighteen amendment added a provision to allow revocation of special exceptions, and that provision has been retained. However, the ordinance, the, the supposed ordinance also includes a non-severability language, and that would take care of if a special exception, if the courts found that one condition of a special exception was not acceptable, it would render the entire special exception void. So that it corrects that, that issue. There was a removal in twenty eighteen of the reference to judicial review of denied applications. That's been retained because that's a self-executing provision in state code. There's no need for it. Community meetings, the twenty eighteen amendment made significant changes to how the planning director could require additional community meetings if they were needed because of changes in an application. These proposed amendments clarify that and add some strengthening to that position. Another significant issue that was identified in the twenty eighteen amendments was the existence of many errors within the reference, within the ordinance, references within the ordinance, excuse me. For example, the existing ordinance requires that a special use permit for historic taverns and ends be reviewed considering the factors in section thirty three point eight. However, if you go to that section, that section describes how to initiate a zoning text amendment, has nothing to do with the review of a special use permit. So that's been, all those internal inconsistencies have been fixed. The one thing we have not fixed yet, we have found some additional changes that we need to make. We're trying to make the ordinances more consistent, how we do all the zoning text amendments, for example, correcting the word shall, using the appropriate term, must, or some other term that's more appropriate. Andy Herrick's been working on that and, and we'll, we'll work on that. So don't focus on that. What we, we know about those, we'll correct those. And there are some other minor issues in there. None of them are substantive to change the, the content. One of the things I did, I hope it was helpful. If not, I, I, I hope it helped at least one person. In the summary table of the zoning ordinance, we tried to give you a comparison so you could see how the old ordinance and new ordinance, where things moved around. We thought about giving you a, a strike through of new versus old ordinance, but it was unreadable. So it's strike everything old and it's all new. There are things that are carried over, but it changed, the format got changed so much that you wouldn't have been able to, it was incomprehensible. So with that, you have the ordinance, you have the staff report, you have the brief outline that I've given you. I hope that's helpful. I'd like to just get your feedback and try to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful. So shall we provide the feedback to Mr. Fritz as he's asked? Does someone have?
I had two super minor questions.
Go for it, please.
Tim, if you want to go first, you can.
No.
Okay. All right. Minor, really quick. Um, when you, on page sixteen S, there's a clause discussing whether, the judging of whether the application has substantively changed. I'm just curious, who makes that determination? Cause I, I have seen this a lot where things are like changed dramatically or they're just minorly tweaked and that question comes up. So who judges that or is there a definition somewhere?
It would be, it would be the zoning administrator who would make that determination as an interpreter, under the, the, the overall authority of the zoning administrator to interpret and enforce the zoning ordinance. So the zoning administrator would be looking at that going, that's substantially the same application. You can't file it. And then the applicant, an applicant would have to pursue an appeal if they, if they felt that was inappropriate or wrong.
Okay.
It's the same language. There's been no change to that.
Okay. And then the, page twenty seven, I just was curious. It talks about the fact that the county is not required to accept a applicant's request for deferral. Guess this is my question. Hasn't that always been true? Or is it some, why is there a need to specify that? Just to be clear or?
Yes, it is. It is. That, that has always been the case, but we thought it appropriate to put it in the ordinance to be absolutely clear and, and, and make that statement that the county is not obligated to accept your request for deferral. And we can say no. And we're proceeding to public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim?
I have a couple of kind of, after we've gone through it all, hypotheticals that I'd just like you, because you're so good at doing that, Bill. If we just run through a couple of hypotheticals like we've had, based on things we've seen, just to make sure that you've caught them. I think you have.
Okay.
Um, but my one specific question is page sixteen P. And this is something obviously where we've found ourselves in difficult situations. I think most, if not all of us understand the answer to this now, because Andy has worked with us, some of us for a number of years on this. But in that recommendation by commission, when, when the applicant decides to ask for deferral in the midst of this process, where P is specifically saying that we're either going to approve or disapprove, might there be a way that that could be that, how the deferral fits into that, even if it's a, an asterisk, an footnote, and it's explained so that when new commissioners are seeing this, they would get an understanding of what they can and can't do?
You want to, want to comment, Andy?
Um, so I, I guess, Mr. Keller, I'm not understanding the question in that the, both the commission and the board have the authority at any time to act on a deferral request when it's made. So the ability to, to brand a request to deferral is always available to the commission and the board. This subsection key that, that you've referred to really is just sets out the duty of the commission to make a recommendation one way or another, be it for approval or denial, before an application is passed along to the board supervisors.
I understand that, but do you, do you see what I'm trying to get at? That we have, we have had a number of cases when the applicant is going back and forth, the staff, trying to, trying to guess what, where the vote is going to be. And if there's going to be disapproval, they don't, they, they want. And if there's going to be disapproval, they don't, they, they want to, they want to pull in a deferral there at that point.
And well, and again, as, as Mr. Fritz has pointed out, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but, but as Mr. Fritz has pointed out, the commission and the board always has the ability to, um, deny even a request for a deferral. If there's a sense that there's some sort of gamesmanship going on or, um, strategic advantage that's trying to be had through a deferral request, the commission and the board always have the ability to say no.
I, I think we're talking across each other here.
Okay.
Julian's nodding, maybe Julian could.
No, I, 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 I think, I think what Tim's trying to say that is there a way to sort of explicitly lay out that there's an opportunity for the commission to take a path so that it's clear. So there's, so there's a clarity in it that when somebody's reading it, um, they know that that's one of the, I believe, Tim, that's one of the options that we have available to us as a commission. And so, well, you're right, um, counsel, we do have that ability. But I think sometimes my sense is that sometimes the applicant is not fully aware of that or may have, may have slid over that possibility. And I think it would be the clarity piece for all parties would be to have a, have a, a sentence or have a, have something in there that said, this is, this is always an option for, for both parties.
So the suggestion would be to add the option of a deferral upon request of the applicant, um, the section, subsection P?
Yes, because we know that we can't, we can't do a deferral. And another thing would be to say that, that, that the commission can't do a deferral on its own. It has to be the applicant. And that's something I think with new commissioners, I being one at one point in the past, never quite understood that. And so this seems like if you're trying to do a document that is, um, a roadmap or a dashboard more comprehensible, I think that that it really is often, you know, what do you think? One in ten, one in a dozen. I mean, it's fairly often that we see that happening. So clarification, I would appreciate.
Right. And, and I think again, the main purpose of this is to spell out what the sort of the duties of the commission are. Um, but if, if clarity is sought in terms of the opportunity to grant a deferral upon request of the applicant, I think that can be added in there without taking away again from the main message of here's what the duty of the commission is to act upon applications that are put forward.
Thank you. If I, if I may, just so I can make sure I get to the, the right comments to the board supervisors also. Uh, would that be something that would be best in the zoning, uh, ordinance or best in the, uh, rules and procedures of the planning commission? To make it clear that, uh, a commissioner may question a, an applicant, whether or not they want deferral of an action prior to, uh, taking an action on a, a, uh, taking a vote on a special use permit, rezoning, special exception. Uh, which, which place is the right place to put it?
I leave that to you all.
I, I don't know how many applicants actually would read our procedures or rules and procedures, but I would assume that many of them would at least be guided through this document that's before us.
Okay.
That's it. That's it. That's my major.
For right now, or do you have others?
I, I have a couple of hypotheticals, but let's.
We'll come back to those.
Or maybe we won't want to spend the time on it because of another.
Another matter before us, is there someone else who wants to come forward with questions or observations? Rick, please.
Uh, Andy, this is really directed to you. Uh, there's frequently mention of days in here in terms of the process. Um, is it therefore implicit that these are calendar days versus business days? Cause the language is not explicit as to one or the other.
And if it's not specified, it would be calendar days. And that follows the, the lead, the reason for most of these deadlines is again, following state code, uh, which requires there to be reasonable timelines for, um, county action on applications. And so that's why these deadlines are included.
Yeah. And I believe it's in section two, Mr. Randolph, I believe it's in section two that there's something that says, uh, every reference in this ordinance to days is to calendar days because there are sections that have, section thirty two has that, section four has that, there are other sections. And I believe it's in section two, uh, two or three that actually talks about the days.
Yeah, I presumed it was, but I just thought I, I would check.
It's there.
Purposes of clarity if it was. Okay. Thank you.
Next. Jenny, please.
Um, I don't have any specific questions. I think this is very straightforward and I think it's presented in a really, um, concise manner, which I appreciate. And the materials that were given, I did wonder, because we were having a work session on this and we have made it our practice in the past to take comments from the public. And we have another work session after this, uh, you know, and I hope that we would take comments for that one. So I feel like I should bring it up for this work session if there's someone out there who might want to make a comment. I don't know if that's something the group would want to entertain. I just wanted to ask that question.
We, we can certainly do that if we're moving along quickly on this, cause I, I do appreciate that. Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. I didn't really have anything to add. I think it's really well done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just, I just have a couple of things if I then, if no one else, then we'll just, we can, we can move on. Um, it seems that out of the entire document, there's only one gender specific pronoun, and that's on page fourteen under J.
We thought we caught them all.
We say he, so yeah, I, I.
Fourteen.
Page fourteen J, one, two, third line, second word.
Thank you very much. We've been looking for that.
So that wasn't one thing. And then there's a, there's just, uh, this is the piece, given that this time that people sort of present themselves as, as some things that they, which they aren't. You have in here that you have a, the ability for, um, an agent to, an authorized agent. You used, we use that term of an authorized agent. And how do we verify their authorization or do we not? And figure that if the, the owner of the property is, doesn't come forward, then the individual's been authorized.
Yeah. When making an application, we go through, go through a process to, there's, there's a whole procedure that we do. Being an application that includes who the owner of the property is, how they've designated.
Right.
If it's an LLC, do they have the authority to act for the LLC?
Yep. That's perfect. And then also there's another piece in there where we say that we can't go forward unless if you have taxes or you have fees out there. So I assume we internally verify that this piece of property doesn't have anything heavy leans on or anything like that.
Uh, we do what's allowed by the state code. Yes.
Okay. All right. Fine.
Required by the state code.
What's recorded by the phrase circle. And then on page eight quickly, so one, two, three, the, the fourth one down, where we say one or more maps showing the proposed projects, regional context and existing natural and man-made physical conditions. I guess I've been, I've, I've, I've been raised up really well by commission, by Tim. And that would we ever, would we ever be looking for what are the cultural or hair, or cultural heritage items that might be of interest in a particular area as, as in fact, somebody's bringing a property to us? Cause I didn't see something, we talk about the, we, I think one might assume that there's some view sheds. There's some view shed pieces in here, but do we talk about the cultural, the heritage pieces that might actually be, be, um, um, uh, that might be changed or be involved in a particular, in a particular effort?
Sure. We didn't, I do not believe we have any specific thing in there. One of the things there is, is a, is a, uh, sort of an umbrella and anything else that's appropriate. So, so because we just couldn't think of everything.
I, I understand that. So as you're thinking this through, I think there is some value, um, that given some of the, some of the issues that we've had about the abandonment or particularly in, in, in the city where they've sort of stumbled upon a bunch of graves that lots of people have known they were there, but these people didn't know they were there, um, that when we're doing something like that, that we ask people, you know, that however we do that. And then, and then the other piece of, there's along with that, there's two other pieces and then I, I will stop. Um, when, you know, you heard, I sort of made a point during the premier circle piece that we're taking and, uh, a commercial piece of property and we're moving it potentially to a other blended residential or to a, to a split residential and maybe light industrial or commercial. And so one of the pieces that I'd actually like to hear how we do this is how do we ever get to a point where we know whether or not the best and fair use of a piece of property, what that is, and whether or not this decision to do this is going to take it out of, out of that, out of that area. Because the one thing, given we've got, um, five percent of our development that our, of our, of our land masses and development, I would, I've, I've, I would be cautious about losing any commercially viable land. And so how does that, how's that narrative get in there?
So that's not something we actually ask the applicant to do. That's part of what the staff's review is.
So that's our analysis.
That's our analysis. So, uh, under the state code, looking at the future, uh, the current and future needs of the county for land use. That's actually in the state code, uh, that's actually in this, this ordinance also. It, it disparates the state code. So that's something that needs to be, that staff needs to analyze and that you're looking, that's how you adopt your comprehensive plan. Do we need more? Do we need less of this? Uh, so that's something we, we would want to do. The applicants certainly create a comment on those things, but the analysis really should be coming from staff.
Okay. And I assume there's the same kind of thing we would do about equity, whether or not we're having, we're seeing blocks of land in particular communities being, being picked up, displacing people from those communities. That, that's something that staff would do too.
Yes, yes. And, and it's covered by the things we should be looking at normally in a special use permit and rezoning.
Thank you very much. Are there others? Carolyn, do we have anybody lined up to speak on this from the public?
We do not have anybody from the public for this item.
Thank you. And if, is there anything else that anyone would like to add to this? Yes, Tim. Yes, Rick.
At some.
Tim and Rick.
At some point, when we, when we have you back, Bill, or when, I'm thinking about the land use history that you gave, which was so excellent. I think everyone, public, staff, commissioners felt, um, at the lumberyard. And I wonder if not now, because we have another important matter to deal with, but whether in the context of something that you're going to be bringing to us relatively soon, you could refer back to something that, that's somewhere in this document about issues of changes that were made, that were approved in the early two thousands that have a legacy that lives on, that in lots of ways, the hope is to clean some of that up so that we don't have legacy, legacies in two thousand twenty-one going into the thirties like we did before. And in a hypothetical manner, if you could share with us and then the public could hear that, the bigger picture benefits of, of what this is cleaning up. Instead of the point by point, it's almost like a goody paragraph. But not tonight.
Yeah, I'll see how I can try to do that. It, we've made, we have made, uh, I've been here since the late eighties and we have made a lot of changes in how we process rezonings and everything since then. Some of them thrust upon us by the general assembly and some of them of our own doing.
But I think the, the reflection, the reflection on the legacies is something that informed this. And so if there could be that kind of, if we could have this and then we could actually have it, um, uh, sort of in the public domain before your retirement about that big picture of, of the legacies and, and what we are trying to do in cleaning this up, both for the development community and for the citizens.
Sure. I can give some thought about how I might be able to pull something like that together.
Thank you.
Happy to, happy to do it.
Rick?
Uh, I'd like to address Tim's point, actually. Um, uh, it was Valerie Long and I were the only two people that first met with Elaine Echols when she broached the idea of having a discussion about the need for tighter procedures on special use permits and special exceptions. And what drove that, Tim, was not legacy projects. It was the fact that the staff was frustrated by the number of applicants that were suddenly dropping out at some point during the funnel of policy response from community development. And then submitting that they had an opportunity to all of a sudden get back in the pipeline after they were out procedurally. And so there were all of these loose ends that were cropping up, that a series of anomalies, um, for staff members trying to figure out whether the application is going forward or not. So I'm not doubting that legacy projects may be part of the dimensionality here. But part of what was in the field for staff, I well recall from the first meeting to talk about, uh, exactly what Bill has presented this evening was some significant staff frustrations with applicants moving in and out of the process without any implications. Uh, and with that implications in terms of, um, obstacles that they would face in terms of coming back in. And so what I wanted to do, my closing remark, Bill, was I think you've, and staff have done a remarkable job here in, in what you've presented. It is comprehensive, it's very thorough, very detailed, it's current with state statute. Um, I think it will position us going forward. But as we well know, the best efforts of all of us here to address all these challenges, there's bound to be something that's going to fall through, uh, the gaps here or will arise. But so we'll deal with that when it comes. But I did want to compliment you, especially in staff collectively for the work that was eat, very clearly invested in this. And what a huge improvement this is. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'll pass that along to our team.
So Bill, did you get what you needed from the, from the commission?
I, I did. That was very helpful. Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll see what I can do about a history, uh, what we've done in the past, whether or not I can pull that together, uh, how I can pull that together, I'll figure it out.
Thank you very much, and it's good to see you and, and.
Nice to see you.
Have a good, have a, have a good twenty twenty-one until we see you then.
Thank you very much. I, I leave you now to your next items. Thank you very much. Bye.
So we're moving on to our next work, uh, next work session, which is the Croze master plan. I don't have all of those numbers after it, so I guess I'm just going to look to Ms. Falkenstein and the, and her, and her, and her, uh, her team. Jenny Moore.
I guess I wanted to ask, um, Rachel and, and to you also, Julian, if, um, if it's possible, I know Rachel probably has some introduction things to cover. And then I know you have specific questions that you want us to go through. And I have no, a little bit of notes on each of those questions, but I was hoping that if you were able to stop before you get to the first question and we dive into that, if we can stop, because I had a process question. And then I was trying to keep my comments, um, pretty concise. And so there are some things, instead of repeating them over and over, I'd rather just talk about. And then we can go dive into the question one, if that works for everyone.
Well, what I, what I think if, 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 uh, everyone is okay with this, if we can hear from Rachel and her team, pause for a second. And then if there are individuals in the, uh, in the zoo outside of us who can add something significantly different to what we've heard, because we've received a bunch of very deep and very, very well constructed thoughts from, from, from people directly involved and from people who are, who are offering, offering observations about this process. So if someone who hasn't, uh, done that, then we'd hear a bit from them, but then we'd come back to us and, and spend their evening, um, working through, working through this exciting project. Does that seem reasonable, everyone?
I think that does. I was hoping that after, if Rachel can start it off. And then if you wanted to hear from a few of the public members, that when we come back, if I could ask a question and just make a general statement and then Rachel could take us specifically through each question so we can stay on track.
I think we can do that, but the, we can do that, but we're going to do that after we come back from the pub, from, from what I'm, what I'm expecting. So I'm being, I'm being, being disclosing on this and expecting is very limited public impact because I will just remind us, this is a work session. So this is not a public hearing. There's going to be many, many opportunities for input, big, large, medium and small. But right now this is an opportunity for, I think, Ra- Rachel and the team to sort of hear from us in the same manner that they've heard from people in the community. So I'm being an only child now and being selfish.
Oh, I would just add, um, Mr. Chair, that there were a number of comments said throughout the day. And, um, because I'm not on the road, I was able to read all of them. I don't know if everyone was able to read all of those comments. So I just want to point that out if people feel the need to open their county email and check out some of those. Cause they were pretty detailed. That's a, just a, that's sort of cautionary note. And as you said, this is a work session. We're not adopting anything in particular this evening, although we are giving staff important direction.
Hmm. So with that, with all of those preambles, Rachel, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rachel Falkenstein, Planning Manager. I'm joined this evening by my colleagues, Michaela Accardi and Tori Cunlapolis. Um, I think. I think if I understand what I heard, we should go through our kind of background and initial first couple of slides, but before we get into the discussion, we will pause there for an opportunity for public comment and some comments from Commissioner Moore. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay, so Michaela is going to start us off with some slides about the background.
All right, can everyone see my screen? Right. Good evening, everyone. As a quick overview of our agenda this evening, I'll provide a brief project background and a summary of engagement heard to date. We'll pause as we mentioned just recently, and then we have a series of questions that are outlined in the staff report that we will provide some background information for, and then reiterate the question that's in the staff report. As a brief background of the process, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to begin updating the Croze Master Plan in September of 2019 through a four-phase process. The first phase, community visioning, lasted from September until December 2019, and the goals of this phase were to build an understanding of long-range planning and land use, as well as identify community guiding principles and goals for the master plan. Phase two, we titled focus areas and designing strategies. And in early 2020, this process began and transitioned to a series of monthly workshops and focused conversations that aimed at diving deeper into the community goals that were identified during phase one and drafting recommendations. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this phase was initially in person and transitioned to online workshops, feedback forums and virtual Croze Community Advisory Committee meetings. We are currently in the third phase of this project, plan refinement, endorsements and drafting. Staff is currently seeking feedback on draft plan recommendations and refining draft design and policy recommendations based on this feedback. We've held five land use workshops and two transportation workshops with the Croze CAC. And upcoming meetings will focus on conservation recommendations and prioritizing implementation projects. The final phase of the process is master plan review and adoption, which we anticipate to begin in April of this year and complete in the third quarter of this year as well. There will be ongoing opportunities for public input and participation throughout the rest of the process. This slide is intended to show the list of engagement opportunities that were focused on Croze's land use recommendations that have occurred throughout the process. Actually, I'll clarify focused on land use. Not all of these were at the recommendation phase. These were building upon one each, on each other to get to the recommendations we have before you today. More detailed information about these opportunities is included in attachment three of the staff report. Overall, throughout the engagement process, staff has documented a number of themes, including the importance of providing a mixture of housing types with specific interest on missing middle housing types like multiplexes, accessory units and bungalow courts, as well as affordable housing. We've heard about the importance of respecting Croze's small town feel that attracts and retains residents. We've heard about the importance of balancing both form and density, meaning that form is consistent with Croze's small town feel, while also acknowledging the infrastructure needed with new infill and development. Connecting centers of activity with a focus on downtown Croze as a primary development, development area center has also come up as a theme. We've also heard ongoing concerns about the county's ability to provide infrastructure needs related to traffic and school capacity consistent with development. Based on these themes and community input heard during phase one of this process, staff drafted a guiding principle for the land use chapter of the master plan. This is before you on the screen. It's support and strengthen Croze's history as a self-sustaining town, while ensuring that new and infill development is compatible at scale and design and provides housing choice for all community members. This guiding principle was refined after community and Croze CAC input over time. There are also five goals for the land use chapter that are currently drafted, which reflect the themes that I shared previously. And these include topics such as housing choice, development that's consistent with the design and scale of existing neighborhoods and others. These are available for your reference tonight on page five of attachment one. I'll transition this lines to Rachel to talk about the purpose of tonight's work session.
Thanks, Michaela. So the purpose of our work session tonight is to go through our draft future land use recommendations and take the planning commission feedback to inform and help staff update the draft land use recommendations. And we have a work session with the Board of Supervisors scheduled for March 3rd. So we'll carry your recommendations forward to that work session on the same topic. I did want to make one point about the recommendations before you tonight and attached to this, the staff report that we sent earlier. We shared the same land use map, future land use plan that we shared with the community and the CAC at work sessions that they had in September, October and November. Staff decided not to make any changes to that to get the commission's feedback before we go back and make any changes to the map. There are certainly areas that could go either way based on the guiding principle that you saw and the goals we're trying to achieve. But really, we're trying to strike a balance between the goal to provide more housing choices for the community that we heard was really important in those early in-person workshops that we have with the community. But then the concern of growth of the community and the infrastructure to keep up with that growth. So really trying to strike a balance, and we're looking forward to hearing your feedback tonight on some of the topics that we highlighted in the report, some of the concerns we've heard, especially from the CAC at their previous work sessions. So here, I think I'll go ahead and pause our next slides. We'll get into the topics for discussion. So happy to pause here for public comment.
You mean comment from the public, right? Not, not the commission?
Yes, this is going to be, use a, use a bit of this time for a comment from the public and then let Jenny sort of kick us off before we then come and talk and discuss the various questions. So Carolyn, do you have people who wish to speak? And as mentioned before, we've received so absolutely thoughtful pieces in our mailboxes, both today and prior to today, sort of laying out some very some important thoughts and well-crafted thoughts. So unless, unless you have anything.
All right. I have three people right now. The first one is Tom Loach. Mr. Loach, please unmute yourself. Please state your name and address. If you're representing a group, please list that as well. You have three minutes to speak and your time starts now.
Group, I strongly object to the format the county staff has chosen to present a land use segment of the Croze Master Plan. Asked by staff would put the planning commissioners position where they would essentially veto the votes taken by the Croze Advisory Committee. Initial question regarding the new cliche, missing middle, missing middle housing, asks the commissioners to take a position on a policy not supported by any votes by the Board of Supervisors. After consultation with our supervisor Anne Malick, I have been informed that there have been no specific votes based on a newly developed affordable housing policy that deals with missing, missing middle housing. Additional questions asked by the staff would require commissioners to comment on upcoming development proposals that will appear before the commission without the benefit of a full staff report. Perhaps a more important question would be, is Alamo County abandoning the concept of the model neighborhood as a mechanism for incorporating affordable housing into the fabric of the community, which was the basis of providing affordable housing in Croze? If affordable housing is an important issue, on the other hand, the community would like to know whether missing 300 affordable homes that were supposed to be built under the county 15% of proffer agreements but made by new developments disappeared to. I did an analysis in the past 20 years of development based on the county yearly building report. I removed all homes built by Wright and then applied a 15% of proffer and came up with an affordable housing number of 330 affordably used units that should have been built during that time. According to the county, there have been a total of 21 homes sold as affordable, so sold as affordable in Croze. So where are these homes? Reading the staff report, it appears as if the votes taken by the Croze Advisory Council are best incidental finding. It has been very evident since the beginning of the start of this master planning process that the county staff wanted nothing more to do than stuff as much housing into Croze as possible to cover up the 20-year failure of its affordable housing program. What should have happened at this meeting was for the county staff to redo, redo their original land use matrix and based on the recent votes at the Croze Community Council with an adequate explanation of those votes by our representative, Ms. Moore. What you've presented tonight is not, repeat, not the voice of the Croze community. At this point, I think it would be better for the, the community to take a vote and no confidence in the county planning staff and complete the master plan ourselves. After all, it is a community master plan, or is it? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next person to speak is Rebecca Elliott. Rebecca, please unmute yourself. Please state your name and if you're representing a group, please let us know what that is. Your time starts now. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My address is Wayland Drive in Croze, and I do not represent any group. Thank you to all of the commissioners for your, your time tonight and for allowing us to speak during this, this working session. I guess I, I would sort of like to agree with the person who spoke previously. I think that the CCAC's input has been disregarded and that the affordable housing model that's proposed here has been tried and tested and has proven to be a failure. There is not affordable housing really in Croze and collaboration with grassroots affordable housing groups would be the, the best way to move forward. The infrastructure that's in Croze is not at a level to support the amount of development that's being rammed through without the support of people in Croze. We don't have the roads, we don't have the schools, we don't have the water. And I think that, that there is a pretty strong united feeling that this plan is being imposed on the people of Croze rather than being something that's supported by the majority of the community. I think in particular, a couple of steps, aside from more collaboration with grassroots housing groups, stopping, removing the downtown overlay, which would cram a ton of development into the heart of our town, that would be really important. And then removing that middle density designation, I, I think would also be pretty important. Croze is a, it is a welcoming community. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful community. And it has the opportunity to continue growing in a beautiful, welcoming way. But that's not this way. And I think that there is pretty widespread awareness of that fact. So thank you again to the commissioners for allowing us to speak during this work session, and that's all I have to say.
Before we move, thank you, Ms. Elliott. Before we move on, I can tell the public that it's, it is helpful when you're saying that you agree. So that's when you agree with a previous speaker. And we're seeing that as it comes across. So if you're wondering whether or not we're seeing those comments that you're in agreement with individuals, we are. And so that's, that's also a way of sort of lifting up your voice in that manner. Carolyn.
Next, I have Brian Day. Brian, please state your name and address. If you're representing a group, what that group's name is. You have three minutes to speak and your time starts now.
Raider Croze, outside the development area. And I also serve on the CCAC. I just want to basically support the statements that have been made. I think on the one hand, the staff has been very professional in conducting a good process. But at this point, the real voices of the people from Croze are not being heard. I think there's an effort by the staff to not make changes in what you're seeing to get your input, but we want you to know that there have been meeting after meeting after meeting here in Croze with lots and lots of participation and an overwhelming concern about infrastructure not keeping up with development and an ever-increasing density. Now, when that density happens within the development area, it's okay, but it's real often happening on the edges instead of where we want it. The county has made significant investments in downtown with the Barnes Lumber Project and the improvements of the streetscapes and so forth. But we're still getting an awful lot of fringe development, which is not in keeping with the county's policy with the existing master plan or within the, in keeping with the interests of the citizens that have participated in huge numbers, pre-COVID and during COVID. So thank you very much.
All right. And the next one is Phil Kirkley, or Kirby, I'm sorry. Phil Kirby, Mr. Kirby, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, address, and if you're associated with a group, state that. Your time starts now.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Phil Kirby. Me and my family live in Parkside Village. I saw the document that was prepared by the, the neighborhood committee, and I'm not part of that committee, but have attended some of the meetings. And, and I agree with the broad statement that it's making about the concern about following up infrastructure with actual implementation, the plan for infrastructure with implementation. Because my concern that I've seen happen near me, and I see it getting ready to happen again, is ad hoc things like emergency roads being cut across green beds to accommodate emergency vehicles because the infrastructure was not put in. I see a plan to build a jug handle. And having grown up in New Jersey, I don't know if you guys know what jug handles are, but they're just put in because the road that was put in can't handle the traffic of the development. So it was the only thing to do. So you cut through the neighborhood to build, build up traffic around it. And my, my biggest concern is when the plan is not solid and it's not agreed to, ad hoc solutions start to define the town. And in my neighborhood, I see this road that goes down the hill and over the stream and cut feet out of the green buffer zone to accommodate this emergency road that had to be put in as an ad hoc solution because the infrastructure wasn't followed. And really, that's my biggest concern when we don't follow through on the plan. Thank you.
All right, I have one more. And that is Neil Williamson. Neil, please unmute yourselves, state your name and address and the organization you represent. Your three minutes starts now.
Hello, Commissioners. Neil Williamson, President of the Free Enterprise Forum. I have one simple question. The TJPDC, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, produced a report indicating that you needed 11,000 new residences to serve the needs of the community by 2040. Where will those residences be? Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. That is the last one.
Thank you very much. And so moving back in, Jenny, would you like to sum that up or move that, move what you'd like to say before we come back to, to the, to Rachel and her colleagues?
Yes, I, and thank you for that, the time to do this and for taking public comment. I think it's probably better if I just, I have written this down, so I'm going to read to you all. I apologize. But it was my best way of having my thoughts be concise, and I think I really want to just put some of these things out there. And then when we go through each of the questions, I don't have to repeat myself and but I want you to let this sit with you as we work through the questions. And then I'll just ask the question that I had for staff about process at the end. So Rachel or whoever wants to answer can answer, and then you can move us through the questions. At the end, so Rachel or whoever wants to answer can answer, and then you can move us through the questions. So the comments that I have to make are overarching. And they're relevant to every question that you have for the planning commission at this work session. The majority of the CCAC and the community does not favor density. Or even a change in green space designations because people are very concerned. About infrastructure projects that have been in our plan for over 10 years. Many of these projects are still not funded. And it's hard to see a clear path forward on some of these critical projects. I don't know if all the planning commissioners have seen all the emails, but there was the email. That outlines some concerns and then there's a petition that has 340 some signatures on it. And so I wanted to touch on that. That, you know, the the petition calls out specific changes that. The people signing it have objections to, and then it cites concerns about the failing infrastructure. I just want to be clear that both the CCAC and I recognize that property owners have the right to seek rezonings. And they also have the right to have previously marked green space in some cases that we're going to work through tonight, given a land use designation. I don't support the notion that development should stop, but I do support the idea that in almost all the cases. The land use designation should either not be changed, or it should be put at the lower end of density ranges. Also, in this petition and some of the comments from the public tonight, the 12,000. Population number is referenced. And so I wanted to try to clarify that. That number is not in our current master plan. And, you know, if staff want to speak to that too, since it was a question from the public, that would be helpful, but. That's not in our current plan. This number, and you guys have probably heard me talk about the 12,000 number before. This number was the ideal maximum population at full buildout. And that number came from consultants that the county hired, and that was that number was provided years ago. That number was abandoned, and it's the basis for a lot of frustration that community members have when it comes to master planning. The Croze Community's relationship with the county is fragile, and it feels like the county may be asking for feedback. But unwilling to listen to the feedback if it is in conflict with what they are recommending. This is a somewhat awkward awkward position for me to be in. And I'm willing to go through each of the questions and try to revisit each of them. And be concise, but also recognize that these topics are covered over a span of multiple meetings with CCAC. Highly attended by the community where lots of information was brought up, lots of questions. Staff has compiled a lot of that. Some of it in the report doesn't feel. Quite as accurate as what I remember hearing at CCAC, but I I want to work through those. And I guess what I'd like to ask staff is. And Rachel, you kind of started to talk about this as far as process with the board having a work session in March, but can you? I guess I'd want you to explain at what point the feedback of the Croze CAC and the community is taken into consideration. And I see a couple items here that happened later in the discussion where staff has proposed a potential change. From what you discussed at CCAC, but the majority of the items feel like you're trying to get feedback from us tonight. And you're stating that the community and the CAC. Don't agree, but you're still you're still asking us for feedback, which is fine. But I guess you hear angst on the part of the community, and I have this too. About how how does it work? How are you going to take what the community said and what you hear from us tonight? And how does that go forward to the board? And I guess I wanted to just point out that, you know, I've been the planning commissioner. This is my sixth year, I think, that I'm starting now. And, you know, while I've served, we did the Pantop's master plan and we had land use. When there was a tie with their CAC that was brought to the planning commission so we could say. You know, here's what we think, break a tie. I don't know where that happened in that process, but it felt like, you know, we were called upon. In a situation where the community couldn't agree to help sort that out. And that's not the case here with the numbers we've seen from the Croze CAC. So I wondered if you could speak to that and talk about. Specifically what happens at the work session and then how does everything get crafted into? Something to bring to the board or do you later come up with a draft? Based on the feedback you've heard.
So the draft before you today is the same that was shared with the CAC. And it is correct, most of what staff was recommending was not supported by the CAC. We've we found ourselves in a place where we felt like the feedback we've received early on. In some of the visioning workshops is in conflict with the decision to not support staff's recommended changes. And so instead of tweaking the map a little bit here and there, we thought it best to get the commission's feedback. On some of these concepts and the way we applied them before we make any changes to the map. It's pretty inefficient for us to go into GIS and continue to make these new maps and. Rather than having several different drafts of maps get out there, we thought it'd be. Easy as if we got all of the feedback from you all and then from the board as well. Before we go in and make another another draft map. So that was our approach. We hope to package up all the feedback we've heard, summarize it, provide options for the board as well for them to weigh in on. And we'll take what the board says is kind of our ultimate direction as to which way we should go with the land use.
Can I just add one more thing?
Let me give some context to that. So so what we're talking about is is a three legged stool process. Where where the involvement of the community has has brought us is is laid out here and we've received. We've received some good feedback and some good sort of acknowledgement of what's gone there. We're going to have an opportunity to speak what how if if we were hearing this. And then if I'm understanding, then then this package, so our comments plus the communities count plus Croze community comments. Will then go to the. Go to the to the board of supervisors and wrap it all in the whole process before significant. Before significant changes are made or updates are made to the plan. Is that what you're is that what you're suggesting, Rachel?
That's correct.
Okay, so now Jenny.
Um, I appreciate that, Rachel and Julie. And I I guess I just wanted to. I I will speak to some of your comments about getting mixed messages from the community or having something early on. Seem like it's changed. I can I have that addressed as we go through the questions, but I guess to the commission, I would say that. With this process, I think it's pretty clear to me to see how community members might wonder. You know, why, what happens with their engagement and why they took the time to go through all this if it ultimately we we may. Agree or disagree with the community as a group as a whole. Ultimately, it's just going to go to the board and they're going to decide these things. I think that is potentially really frustrating for a lot of people, and I can understand that seeing this process unfold. So. I will leave it at that.
Karen.
Yeah, I I wanted to make just an and sort of an overarching statement before we get into the nitty gritty of the details. I appreciate the challenges that happen when you're getting lots of different perspectives from the community. And then you have your professional planning judgment as staff. And then now we're going to throw the commissioners into it, which is a whole other mix of background and knowledge and. My my goal is not to muddy the waters, but I do want to express. A little frustration. I don't know frustration is the right word. Let's just say difficulty on my part. As a commissioner, because I don't live in Croze. I certainly have opinions about density and what makes a good neighborhood and. The importance of connected green space to make vibrant communities and all of that stuff. But I don't feel that some of the questions that we're being asked to weigh in on tonight. I don't feel that I have the knowledge. On the ground to weigh in on answering all of these questions. And I'm just being completely sincere. And rather than being, to use a planning phrase arbitrary and capricious. I am going to, in many cases, defer to Ms. Moore. And and some of the CAC perspectives because I don't have the ability, I don't have enough information to make a judgment call. On quite a few of these questions from staff. It's because if had I sat through all of the CAC meetings, had I be intimately familiar with. Every twist and turn of Croze, then maybe yes. But these are very detailed questions, and I'm not faulting staff for asking them, but I just want to say at the get go. That as we go through this, there's going to be areas where I cannot make a judgment call because I simply don't have enough information. To to render what I would call an informed decision.
I I think that's I think that's fair, Karen. I think all of us are in a similar position. And what my sense is is that. That Rachel and 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 our colleagues are asking us for feedback and they're asking us for for our. Our 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 thoughts on the things that are before us and not we are not voting on anything right now. We're offering. And in your case, a a very a well formed opinion on a number of things. And and I think it's fair to say that on this one. I'm limiting my comments because I don't know the full the full details on it, but I would imagine there's a number of things. That each of us there through here will say, yes, I have some sense on that. And I would think if we can figure out how to. How to iron out some of the some of the issues here that that would be something that I would support, or I would say that that's something to go forward with.
Sure. And just just to note, though, I I am, I want to be very careful that. When we come to those conversations, some of my answers to the questions will be, I do not know. And so I don't want it to be reflected that the commission was generally in agreement because they didn't object or, you know. Only only Ms. Moore and I'll just pick on someone Cory agreed on this, you know. I I just really, I know we're not voting, but we are supposedly making recommendations and I'm just expressing a little frustration that. That the level of detail we're being asked to weigh in on is more than I feel competent and capable to weigh in on now. Information may be presented during these points while they're made, that I say, oh, now, okay, now I do have a strong opinion or a certain opinion. I don't know that I can in many of the cases of what we're being asked this evening. That's all I'll say on that for now.
That's fair. That's noted. And I'd like us to be able to get into this, but and to have this discussion because I think some. I I think we will find time to express ourselves, but Rick, I see you wanted to to perhaps comment here.
The only thing I was going to say, I think it's totally appropriate for staff to be coming to the planning commission. And asking us as a sounding board to respond to the concepts. And the ideas and the proposals that we are looking at here. And for the members of the public, we are not a definitive body this evening. We are only here to provide feedback. Totally appropriate for the planning commission to be doing that.
With that, Rachel.
Okay, so I will get us started on our first discussion topic for this evening. Make sure my screen here. Okay, is everyone able to see that? Okay, great. So our first topic, a reminder, we have six questions for your discussion tonight. Subcategories into three different topics. The first one is new land use tools, which we have two of. And the first one we'll get into is the middle density residential category. And this should look a little bit familiar to you because we had a work session on this topic back in September where we brought the concept of the middle density residential land use designation to you all for your input. It was before we had applied it to the map anywhere. It was just some concepts and some some guidance around what this category would look like. And you all were fairly supportive of the idea, but asked us to come back once it was on the map and you could weigh in a little bit further. So just a reminder about what this category is, it's a residential land use category that has what we're calling densities kind of in the middle range. Of six to 24 units per acre. Now, the primary uses here would be residential uses with some form parameters around up to three stories. Building footprints no more than 5,000 square feet. And that was to help kind of cultivate the housing types that would be within this category of those. Missing middle housing types that you've heard that term thrown around before. Essentially, what it means is these forms of housing that are a little bit smaller and because of their size are naturally a little bit more affordable. Than large, single family residential units, but they're not high density like a high rise apartment or. Even, you know, a medium to large size apartment building. So housing types here would be. Multiplexes, accessory dwellings, townhouses, live work units. Those scale of housing that are kind of in that middle category. There's also secondary uses allowed in this category similar to our other residential categories, just small scale residential. That would be appropriate in a neighborhood types of forms and uses. A couple of examples on this slide of what these housing types would look like. The one on the left of your screen is an existing housing type in Croze right now in Parkside Village. It's kind of a multiplex where you have. You know, six or eight units in one building, but they fit within the scale of single family. You can see that right across the street from single family housing. So it's more of a scale thing, but you've got smaller unit types coexisting with single family. And then on the right side of your screen is the recently approved development that went through a rezoning process. They're still. Working through their site plan for Bamboo Grove. That is. Bungalow Court type housing development where you have some smaller single families clustered around a central courtyard. So the the way we arrived at the density recommendations was to look at some of these housing types in our community. But also just on a on a national scale to see kind of what density densities could average out on these types. And I think you'll see that the the higher density of the 24 range, those are those are not going to be as common, probably. What that we'll see in our community, but when you start to do accessory apartments, you might start to see some of those types of densities. An examples here on the screen, one is in Croze, neighborhood of Wickham Pond. And that is where you have some accessory basement accessory apartments within townhomes. And it's got a density of about 27 units per acre. And then an old trail village, another example from Croze, you've got single family with accessory units in the back and that density pencils out to about 15 units per acre. So the way we applied it to the map, so this is the first time you all have seen our application of this new land use tool in Croze. Is we actually replaced urban density residential with middle density residential. In every area of Croze except for one, and that's an old trail. Where there is a large apartment building that just wouldn't be in keeping with the middle density residential, but everywhere else. We applied it where the densities existed, existing neighborhoods and already had an urban density category. And there are only two areas that are kind of unbuilt or don't already have zoning approval on them. And that would be. I'll show my cursor where they are. One is Whitegate Village. We'll talk about that later in our discussion. And then this area here, just north of three, 240. We also have an active zoning application there. But it was an existing urban density parcel and is currently vacant. So the feedback we've heard on this has been has kind of evolved over the course of this project. So as I mentioned previously. We had a lot of support in our early workshops for wanting more more housing choice in Croze, more types of housing that are maybe on the more affordable end of the spectrum. So. So all types of people could afford to live in Croze. And then we had some workshops where we looked at different housing types and asked for feedback on what would be appropriate housing types in Croze. And we we had a lot of feedback for this missing middle housing types that I talked about earlier. And so we developed the category and got some feedback. People thought it was an interesting concept to have. Land use category, there was some support for that, but as we started to apply it to the map. We got a good bit of opposition to the way it was applied. And I think that the theme that we heard have heard mostly in terms of opposition is folks not wanting additional density and growth in the community. Pushback that it, you know, takes away from the small town character, but also the infrastructure concerns that you'll you'll hear repeated throughout this evening that. Infrastructure is just not keeping up with growth in Croze, and so adding more density is problematic for that reason. So this is our first question for you all this evening. We wanted your input about our application of middle density residential. Do you are you supportive of how it was applied? Or do you do you think we should change our approach here? Reminder that you did you did give your support previously for the category, but if there's something now that you're thinking about it more, seeing it applied that. Should be changed about kind of the guidance around this designation. We'd be looking for that feedback as well. So I think I'm going to stop sharing my screen for your feedback, but your question, this is question one in the staff report that you had.
Thank you. So how do we want to go about this? Yes, Jenny.
Um, I guess I would like to hear from others, but I'm willing to, you know, make a couple of comments I've written down trying to keep things. Pretty concise to start off the conversation or, you know, I, I mean, I feel like maybe I should start first.
Jenny, may I ask just a really quick burning question?
Yeah.
Uh, Steph, I'm sorry, Rachel, I lost you when you were talking about, you were talking about your cursor and where this. Missing middle applied. You showed us some new areas to which it would apply to, but were you saying? Where, where does it apply again? Sorry. In, in what parts of Croze? All of the residential or?
No, all of the areas that were previously designated urban density residential, we have changed over to middle density.
And can you give us a sense of how much area that is?
Oh, I don't have the acreage calculation. I wouldn't want to ballpark it and be way off. The only, I will point out, there are only two areas. Not developed. Vacant properties and I would guess those together are probably less than 20 acres. We can probably quickly get that calculation if that's helpful for you.
Okay, but it could, it could, other areas that are currently just. Urban density residential could be redeveloped under this new, you know, they could tear down what's there. Whoever, you know, buys the property and then rezone it or reapply. Or I said, redevelop it, I should say, sorry.
Right, redevelop, but would likely if they wanted to increase their density, come in through a rezoning process to do that first.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry Jenny, I just, I was confused.
Well, that's fine. I think it would be helpful maybe if. Or at least for me, I would like to break my comments out because you. As Rachel pointed out, a lot of the places where you're showing this already are developed. So I'd like to speak to those and then the Whitegate Farm property is a separate question that you have for us that's. You know, specific to that parcel or those parcels and then, but I would speak to the Old Dominion part, which is undeveloped, but has the application. But I guess Julian, do you feel like I could, I do have a couple of questions and comments. Should I start off with that?
Yes, on this, on, on question one.
On justice, yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it together here. So I guess one of the things that I'll go ahead with my comments and, you know, I wanted to point out that. I understand how there's a conflict in some of what you hear from the community and. I mean, this, it's, that's been happening for quite a while. So I appreciate that that's difficult to work with, but I, I guess I'd like to point out that. Early on, when people were. Putting stickers on, you know, large. Displays that staff had created with different housing types, it was. A really good exercise and I think it, a lot of the images that were shown were how multifamily homes and different housing types can be done in a really attractive way. And but the community is responding to that and the two things that come to mind when. You know, I see us going through some of those types of activities is that it's. You know, it's kind of out of context when they can't see where this is going to happen in the community. So it's a little abstract and also, you know, you're showing really attractive ways that multi-housing, multi-family housing can be done and. Getting a favorable response to that, but. We know that it isn't always that attractive and we know that we have a difficulty in controlling the way it looks as far as architecture. So when you show all these images and they all look really cute and awesome. You know, we all know that that isn't necessarily what's going to be built and I think that's why you get some pushback when it starts to move into a reality. You know, type of situations for the community. I guess the, I had some numbers I wanted to share. Really quick and then I guess just two questions. I think that for me, it's difficult. To talk about the middle density category with the community because we have. We have some numbers that we got from county staff. At since we're in the review process and. You know, some of these are, some of the, the units that go in to make up this number are rentals and there's a very small amount that's future construction, but the majority of this number. Was supposed to have been built as affordable housing and it's 386 units. And when you go through the chart and pull out. That's just in Croze and then what I pull out of that chart is 21 units that have actually sold. As affordable out of all those units and there are some outstanding that haven't been built, but that's really a devastating number. To share with, you know, the planning commission and the community that thought that. All these units were going to be embedded in rezonings and things as they took place. And I understand that the county is working on an updated affordable housing policy. And that will be adopted, but it's, it's a hard sell for me to come to the community with this new idea. And tell them it's going to be fix everything. Because I still worry that, you know, especially when there's two. Applications that, you know, have come forward, even though they're, I think, waiting to hear how this process goes, it's. Really difficult for me to explain to the county or to the citizens, the community at this point, how is this going to be any different? So that's where I'm stuck on this. And then when I go through the map to try to get at the question more specifically. You know, I see this in the areas where there's existing. Development and I guess I, you know, when I see it in Old Trail. It doesn't really bother me that much because they have a coded development and they have a full, a maximum build-out number and they have a minimum number. So seeing this largely as an old trail is already where there's a lot of stuff built. You know, their number can fluctuate up and down, which makes it really hard to track, but it, that doesn't really bother me. And I guess my question for staff is. In all the places where you're showing this, where there's existing development. I mean, is, I think Karen touched on this a little bit, in those places is the intention, because a lot of that isn't that old. Is the intention that somewhere down the way that would redevelop and be more dense at the 24. And all of these places, the urban density for Croze is up to 12. So you're showing a change there for that. And I guess my, so my other question is, is that the intention is? If these neighborhoods, which some are actively being built and some are not that old. That they redevelop under this category and if so, what, what's the situation with sidewalks in those areas? If you're encouraging redevelopment that's twice as dense as what's there.
That's not our intention with this designation and existing neighborhoods, especially those that are fairly new. We don't expect those to redevelop in the life of the plan. I think what could happen is some maybe small. Infill development opportunities, for instance, one lot wants to put an accessory dwelling on it. And it's a small lot. So it would, if you do the calculation, look like a high-density number, but. You know, would be very small scale. But a lot of that depends on the neighborhoods and many neighborhoods have homeowners associations that wouldn't allow that to be a development anyway. So it's. Some of it is just to capture what's there now, the densities that are there. With this land use category, you know, it's six to 24, so it's still, it would still be consistent if it were. Urban density previously and had something closer to the six number. It's, it's to capture what's there, but also to show a vision for a future perhaps in areas that might redevelop or might be vacant now.
And for sidewalks and stuff, I think, I feel like most of these neighborhoods where I see it applied where there's already existing development. You know, I, I don't know every street in here, but there should be decent sidewalks. Since it's newer development where you're showing it, is that correct?
I haven't done that analysis to see if every street that has this designation has a sidewalk. We're actually getting into our transportation. Kind of network planning right now, so we can look at that and bring that information back to you. That's helpful.
Thank you. I guess my comment on that would be if there's in places where you want to apply this, you know, I, I. Struggle to see the advantage in doing that, but where there's existing neighborhoods. You know, I would definitely, you know, want to see sidewalks and. You know, walkability and multimodal transportation if we're going to encourage it to become more dense than what it is. And then I guess I will leave Whitegate Farms since that's a very specific question that you have, but the. Old Dominion is the other site that you show and I guess. You know, I would support that it's staying at the urban density residential, which our maps in Croze is the up to 12. Units and you're showing that. As a possibility for this new category. And that's, I let other commissioners ask questions and make comments.
Thank you. Who would like to come next? Tim, please.
Okay. First of all, I guess I should say that I'm still conceptually in support of this concept. Secondly, there have been several questions that have been asked in the chat. About whether the density of this is actually higher than the. Pre-existing urban density. So Rachel, could you answer that?
So previously in Croze, urban. Was six to 12, which is inconsistent with how it had been applied throughout the rest of the development area. Our intent with as we go through our master plans and update them is to. Consistency because it's difficult to administer for staff. It's confusing for the community. So our is that urban density in Croze moving forward is changed to be consistent with other urban density categories. Throughout the county, so that's six to 34 units per acre. And the only place it's applied on the map as shown is in Old Trail. I forget the name of the apartments, but it's the apartments towards the center of Old Trail.
Rick wants to do a follow-up, so why doesn't Rick do it and then I'll?
And then you'll continue, Rick then.
Yeah, I, I, Rachel, I think one thing that needs to be pointed out here is with your new typology. Of middle density residential, what you're looking to do is have. A residential density zone that is much more appropriate. For affordable housing and you've cut back dramatically in the potential. For office and institutional development in those areas, which is not appropriate in a residential zone. So you've come up with a hybrid, which you're calling middle density residential, which is much more residential friendly. Than urban density residential, which has much more of an urban feel to it. So. I, I echo Tim's remark, that's why I jumped in Tim and put my hand up to say. You're not the only person that supports this category. And again, we're not here this evening imposing middle density residential. On a specific set of two or three communities in Croze. We're not making that decision this evening. That question is not before us. The question before us is, is this a reasonable category? To describe intent and purpose for certain sectors of Croze to maximize residential growth. And I, I'm echoing support for that this evening. That's all I see that we're called on to do. So I'm anxious to continue to move forward this evening.
Tim.
So I, I think that the, and there's no question, I mean, I, I've followed Rachel and staff's work over the years. That she's committed to a higher quality built environment in all aspects, from. Environment to pedestrian to housing types. So I'm not questioning that at all and I think more. Where I'm going to be weighing in with some. Some specifics on how it might be improved is in the next question in the downtown neighborhood overlay. But in terms of, in terms of this one. If we don't pay attention to the following questions, which are going to be site-specific, which are going to become. Just like what we're all dealing with, with new projects all the time. And what community members are dealing with if it's adjacent to their existing neighborhoods. My, my one concern. And yet I think it was pretty well addressed by you all last time. I'm still wondering about this 5,000 square foot footprint. Because it seems to me that, you know, the average kind of house size is in that. 2,500 to 4,000, but more likely in the 2,000 to 2,000 to 3,500 square feet. And so then we have to rely on what the standards are going to be and this isn't all in an overlay district, so. I have some concerns about what the building forms are going to be. Especially when we're trying to work towards the more. Affordably priced units. And, and whether we really want something as big as the 5,000 square foot footprint. Otherwise, I, I think Rick articulated it very, very clearly and well. I think that our question is. First, are we in support of this zoning category and, and I strongly do.
Next. Rick, do you want to come back on that? Are you through? Okay.
There's more to say. I think Tim summarized it very well.
Anyone else? Okay. Jenny?
Yeah, I guess I did, you know, I'm not going to be rushed through this process, so I'm going to still have my comments that are, are. Specific to sites, even though the question I see from staff is general. But everything in the report that leads up to that is talking about where this would be, which is relevant in our conversation as this is a new category. For Croze because we're under review. So I am going to talk about that and I would encourage any other commissioner that sees a place where it might exist on the map or not. We're reacting to. This for this area. So I am going to, I mean, I stand by my comments on each of those things as I went through. I understand the questions general, but you know, this is work that the community's done that now is before us and I think it is appropriate to make. Comments that are a little more detailed when that's all the content that leads up to that question. So you know, that, that's my comment on that. I'm having trouble listening to everyone and reading what. People are writing and I know there's questions in the chat and maybe we'll just have to get back to those later because I can't. Follow those, yeah.
What I'm going to suggest, since this is recorded. And that I do know that there's probably going to be another CAC. That for this evening, the really the focus is about us. And so I'm going to ask staff if you'll look at the, look at the comments and the questions in there that I assume you have a. Rachel, I assume you have a, a Croze listserv that you can push responses out to if necessary or when you desire to do so. And so that if you'll look at those questions that are being put into the chat and that somehow or another we can push those together, send and then include the, include the. The planning commission and your responses, but I would not want us to have to do this iterative process. With chat, the chat box.
Can get a list of all the questions from the chat and I will share that with Rachel and then she can. Answer those questions tomorrow.
Thank you very much. So if we can move, which is concentrating on what, what are, are questions and our, and, and our, our. Our observations, I think we can move this to a place where it can continue on its discovery path. Daniel.
Just a couple of clarifying questions, good enough for Commissioner Carr said, so footprint. And 5,000 square feet with a maximum height of three. Am I doing the math to believe that the maximum building size would be 15,000 square feet? Is the footprint the place that it's taken times the number of stories? Okay.
Correct.
Make sure, I want to make sure I was.
Yeah, and to clarify, that was intended to apply to multiplexes, so you likely would have more than one unit. It's. Hopefully not just one big house that's that big, but you'd have a couple of units in there. And, and so that's that intention or that recommendation is intended to keep. Family buildings on the smaller scale.
Okay, and then I guess the second part with that is. Just a point of clarification. So I understand, trying to, you know. Remember back to September I talked about, but this new category is expected. This middle density is talked about to try to address. Missing middle is a, is a county-wide designation that would extend beyond just. Croze, it's maybe being applied in Croze or being talked about being applied in Croze at this time. But am I right in an understanding that as subsequent reviews of different plans come up, this would be a category in. Rio or other districts that would be considered for doing things like this?
That's our intent to apply it to other areas as we update future plans.
That's all.
Anyone else? Your next question.
Are you ready for me to move on?
Please, yes, yes, please. Sorry. Your next question.
I didn't know if you were talking to me. Okay.
I am. I'm looking at you, but you can't tell that I'm looking.
Okay. So our next question is again, our second new land use tool, and that is the downtown neighborhood overlay. So again, this is what category we brought to you all back in September and the sort of content is pretty similar to as we saw before. The intent of this overlay is to incentivize more affordable housing in our downtown areas and specifically focus on the preservation of existing affordable housing, otherwise known as NOAs or naturally occurring affordable housing. And it would apply to the areas near downtown that have a neighborhood density residential designation currently. And it would be something we would use, a tool we would use when we're reviewing future legislative applications for rezonings of property. So we've come up with some density informed criteria to pair with the overlay. And as you know, our current neighborhood density residential carries a density of three to six units per acre as a recommendation for density. But we are saying within this overlay, if you meet certain density informed criteria, you could go above that six units per acre density recommendation in these areas. So there are housing forms that are recommended with this overlay and those are similar to the middle density and those missing forms. But they're recommended because they're similar in scale to these neighborhoods that are already there. And there's some examples shown on the screen. The one here on the left is a multifamily, multiplex unit that coexists along single-family homes. It was a conversion. So a house was converted to multiple units. This is in Belmont and Charlottesville. Also accessory units are a type that's recommended. And here are some examples of different ways accessories can be built on a lot, either within the house or converting a garage or adding a detached accessory. And then lastly, we have stacked townhouses here as a type of housing that can be within this category as recommended. So there are two different slides I'll go to that talk about kind of our form and form criteria for the application of the overlay. The first are the form types. So there are three different forms of development that could qualify. The first is converting an existing structure to multiple units. The second is the addition of an accessory on a lot. Third is infill development that adds new dwelling units. So the assumption with infill is that if there are any existing units, they remain. Same with the first two, if there are existing units on the lot, they remain. So the second slide talks about criteria for infill development. So if infill development is being proposed, these two criteria must be met. The development is in keeping with the prevailing development patterns of the surrounding street and the development provides additional affordable or workforce housing beyond what is currently required. And the definitions of the affordable and workforce are supplied here on the slide for your information. Again, the map, this is similar to what you saw last time, but the area outlined in this blue boundary is our proposed boundary for you all to consider. And it would be the areas within the boundary that are yellow. Those are the neighborhood density residential categories. We came up with this boundary based on kind of the existing neighborhood boundaries using our historic historic district designation boundaries as well as looking at historic kind of plot data. So Pleasant Green is included. And we'll talk about that in a little bit, but this is Pleasant Green here for when it comes up. And I can come back to this later if you have questions about the map. This shows, I'm sorry, I forgot I had this. This shows kind of the historic district overlaid with the boundary in red. So the historic district is in white and the boundary of the overlays in red. As you can see, it touches on some areas of Pleasant Green, some areas off of St. George Avenue, as well as the downtown area. And just an example for you of what this could look like in an existing development pattern. We recently had a rezoning approved on St. George Avenue. This is St. George here, where the property was rezoned from R2 residential to R4. And while I acknowledge the R4 is still in keeping with the, the three to six density requirement, I wanted to show kind of what the form of how that looked. So this was an existing lot. It was one pretty large lot. And they added a second house on the lot and an accessory. And you can see the new house is kind of in keeping with the form of the pattern of development on the street. This could, this pattern could be repeated in other areas that might have smaller lots where you could see the density creep up above six, even if they maintain this kind of pattern of development that's consistent with the street. The Pleasant Green property I mentioned before, there's been a lot of feedback and a little bit of office, quite a bit of opposition of including Pleasant Green in the downtown neighborhoods overlay. So I just wanted to talk through what it might look like if we were to continue to include Pleasant Green. So this property is currently being developed by right. You can see some of the houses currently going up. These are townhomes that are being developed. And they could continue the pattern of development by right. It's R6 residential that could get up to six units per acre. However, if the property owner decided they wanted to pursue an additional amount of density on the property, they could ask to rezone it to something higher. If it were in the overlay, we would look at the criteria and see how they were being applied. So we have scale parameters, height of no more than three stories, consisting housing forms to adjacent areas. So we would look at, here's Clean Lane. If they were developing more housing along this area of Clean Lane, we would look at the forms and see if they're consistent with the prevailing development pattern along the street on Clean Lane. There are existing historic properties. I understand one has been, existing historic structures. I understand one has been torn down. But the other one, if it were to be preserved with the redevelopment and reused, that would be something we would look at as well. And then lastly, the provision of affordable and workforce housing we would look at. Again, we would be looking for them to provide something higher than what is currently required through the rezoning process of 15%. So something more than 15% if they were to request a rezoning. So the feedback we've heard on this has been, the reason we kind of proposed this overlay in the first place was a desire to preserve these areas around downtown. There's a bit of fear that as downtown redevelops and becomes a desirable place to live, more so than it is now already, you might start to see tear downs. So that's happening a little bit already, but there's fear that that could continue to happen. So we wanted to create something that would incentivize the preservation of some of these existing houses and neighborhoods. Again, we have this historic district, but there are no regulations to preserve historic structures right now. And again, to continue to support that guiding principle of providing housing choice and create these housing types that the community has said they desire. The feedback we've heard from the CAC were, was kind of twofold. There was concern about the inclusion of Pleasant Green. They largely did not want Pleasant Green to be included because of the possibility of additional density. And they didn't feel it was kind of, kind of the same category as some of the existing neighborhoods. This is kind of a larger vacant property and it didn't seem to fit the way they, they felt it should. So they, they felt Pleasant Green should be removed. And then lastly, there's concern broadly from the CAC about the category of infill development and that maybe that shouldn't even be a possibility to qualify for additional density. So they wanted either additional restrictions around infill development or removing infill development altogether. Some folks kind of on both sides of that topic. So the question for you all tonight, do you continue to support the downtown neighborhoods overlay as we proposed it? Or do you recommend changes to the boundary or, and/or the criteria? And again, I'll stop sharing screens, but happy to go back if there's anything you'd like to see.
Here we are. Tim?
Jenny had her hand up.
Jenny, are you, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Go, Tim.
Okay. The more I think about this, the more problems I have. I understand the dilemma that you're faced with the staff. You want to protect historic resources. You want to provide the continuation of affordable housing in some of those historic resources. And you want to add density in the, in the category of affordable housing. I think it would be much better accomplished by having a local historic district ordinance with a local historic district overlay with design review and an ability to add ADUs to those, to buildings in that greater neighborhood. It seems to me that the conflict between the existing, you're, there are two, there are two conflicts in terms of land use. There are these areas that go from relatively dense on a village scale hits with, with older resources, locally significant, let's call them historic resources. And then there's open land. And so to try to put a new development in it seems to me that that's another problem. A third problem is that by creating the category this way, then you're leaving open the opportunity for density bonuses. And if you're doing density bonuses, then it seems to me that that's going to fly in the light in the face of protecting historic resources. So conceptually, I am totally with you and I think that, that you've been faced with a most, very close to unsolvable dilemma. If the county continues to be resistant to having a local historic district ordinance with associated design review, like every other progressive community in the state of Virginia asks. It's crazy Commonwealth of Virginia, excuse me. So that's where I am. I'm, I'm with what you're trying to accomplish, both in terms of the built-out area and the not built-out area. I think they need to be divided into two categories. And I think there needs to be a different solution for how you accomplish the historic area. Dealing with the historic area.
So Jenny and then Karen, and then Saul looking to see if other people have their hands up.
I do want to, I appreciate Tim's comments and I look forward to hearing what others have to say. I do want to acknowledge what staff has brought up about the Pleasant Green property. So that we may break that apart a little bit because if this moves forward and it's a favorable idea with other commissioners or with the board, I still think it's important to address the existence of that property within the overlay. And I think having it included for me undermines the intent of the overlay as a concept that staff brought forward. And I think part of that is because that property is not like any other property and it's, you know, 30 some acres. I guess I want to point out that because it is by rate, it is six units an acre, but it's, you know, they use the gross calculation. So I've calculated it before and I can't remember what it ends up being, but it's already above six if you calculate the buildable land and how many units they have proposed, which is upwards of 200, just as a by right property. So I think that's important to point out. I also want to say that Stanley Martin has been upfront with me and with Ann since the beginning that they want more density on this property. That's not been something they've been shy about asking for, bringing up in conversation, I guess. And there's always been the mention of an affordable component that would come along with that. And you know, just yesterday I was given a bunch of information. And even during the meeting, you know, some things are coming through, asking about this property. You know, and if there's an opportunity to do something with this property that has an affordable component, that's innovative and different than what we've seen before. I guess I wonder, you know, I really don't feel like it fits in the overlay, but I would suggest that just like with other, like property specific requests that we have before us tonight even to talk about why can't they come forward with a request like that? And then we can consider that on its own merits separately. I don't want suggesting that they stay out of the overlay or even suggesting that there is no overlay to preclude them from pursuing an opportunity. In the beginning of all this process, you know, in some of our breakout sessions, that was a, you know, having them come in with 50 more units or 60 more units was a question. And I've asked staff over and over if they're still asking that question. It sounds like they aren't. It sounds like they're sort of counting on potentially being in the overlay, which I would suggest there's another path forward for them to pursue. So that's my feedback about Pleasant Green. And then I guess, you know, I really agree with what, a lot of what Tim said about the overlay. You know, it kind of starts to go sideways for me when you get to number three. And that's where I worry that, I understand you have to incentivize, you know, people making this choice. But I worry that the incentive is like accidentally, it's a loophole or a workaround that it really encourages more density. And, and I have a lot of questions about, you know, if we pursue this, what would that look like? And Tim brought up one, which is, you know, you don't really give, or at least I haven't seen a number where there's, you know, at the most it could be this. It just throws, you can have more. And then is that in addition to other density bonuses that we know people can get? So where would it stop? You know, and there's just all kinds of questions that I have that sort of unravel when you get to number three. And without having those answered, and I don't know if there's a good answer. I don't know if we're, you know, what was, what started as a, you know, like in good faith effort on staff's part has just gotten to where, you know, it would really encourage more than the six that's already, you know, all these other, all the neighborhoods in there already have the potential, the underlying zoning's there, but the land use designation allows for that three to six. You know, and I guess the other thing I point out is this whole area wraps around downtown. And there's, you know, parts of downtown that haven't developed that do have a residential component to it and is quite dense. So we have those numbers that we're going to bring forward. You know, that should be a part of this conversation when we talk about, you know, getting to some of those housing types that are more inclusive of everyone. So that, that's all I have to say. I don't, I, I really want to hang on to the overlay and figure out a way to make it work better, but you know, I don't know what that is. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Karen?
Trying to be quick. I saw that I, I was interested when Rachel showed the picture from Belmont. That's where I bought my first house when I moved to Charlottesville when I was 27, 100 years ago. And I was able to afford my house because it did have an accessory unit in the back, which helped me make rent as a 27-year-old home buyer. But I will say at that time, when I moved to Belmont, the city had banned all future conversions of single-family residences into duplexes and triplexes because they felt that it started to really destabilize the neighborhood. The city has since reversed that position, is now encouraging that to happen again. And who knows, maybe they'll swing back the other way and then people go back and unconvert a lot of these structures. But it can really change the character of a neighborhood if it happens to a large degree. And so I'm actually not in favor of this recommendation to take a lot of those single-family homes and convert and allow them to be so easily converted into multi-units. In terms of though, maybe having an accessory unit in the back, that is certainly something that can allow you to bring your elder parents to live with you, your college student who had trouble getting a job, et cetera. Or even just renting something out to the earlier affordable housing comment that then allows you to stay in your home as a retiree. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of merit to the idea of an accessory unit, but I think we also have to be very careful with that because I've seen a lot of situations where accessory units end up taking up the whole backyard. And so if you were to create that or create that as some sort of by right allowance, then I think we needed to put some kind of cap on it like that it not take up more than 30% of the backyard. In that way, it would not change the character of all the backyards of a certain neighborhood. You still have green space. There'd still be the ability of the people who live there to go throw a ball in the backyard, hopefully. And it would provide some of that affordability. But, so that's kind of where I come down is that I'm not in favor of the, the ability to just sort of by right, convert all these housing units to multi-units. And then I will just also note that I have no comment on Pleasant Green. And then, um, I will just also note that I have no comment on Pleasant Green. They simply don't have enough information to possibly weigh in on that. So that's just another example where I would refer to Commissioner Moore.
Rick?
Our responsibility of planning commission does not only look at today, but to look where the community is going in the future. And I get what we're, the planning staff is recommending here for a downtown zoning district. And the goal of seeing intensified urbanization with all the attendant features of that. So I'm supportive of the category. I agree with Tim and I had it in my notes as well, that I think a local historic zoning district or an overlay is absolutely essential. Andy, question for you. If Croze was to seek legislative authority to become a town under the state constitution, does a town have the authority to create its own historic district?
Uh, I would need to look into that to be sure, but I believe that a town can adopt that as part of its zoning ordinance.
I think it can because I believe that's what they've done in Scottsville, downtown Scottsville. So maybe that would be a way to go. That also addresses a comment that we've seen repeatedly in the emails we've received and an argument that the county should be doing more in terms of road infrastructure. A lack of understanding that the county is not the master of road construction within the county limits, that we are dependent upon funding from the state because we don't have a road department. We're not Hannover County here. And therefore with taxing authority that a town would provide, then Croze would be able to fund whatever it wants to fund. But that might be one way for it to proceed. The other thing I wanted to bring up is missing under the height and massing category for downtown is any mention of a maximum square foot footprint here. And Rachel, I think it would be helpful to have that fleshed out as you go forward to indicate what you think the maximum should be here. In the, with this category, I'm a little nervous about having it so open ended when it can go two to four stories up to six by exception. And we don't have any estimate of the square footage here. Under these terms, you could basically cut off the top stories of the Empire State Building and put up the first six stories. And then say that's downtown Croze. Is that appropriate? I'm not really sure it is. So I, I would just recommend that be included here as well.
Next. So I will, I will, while we're waiting for others, if they're going to come, so I can say that I was, if there isn't a way to do the overlay, the historic overlay, then my, my sense was that this is an option that gets some, gets a somewhat there, but not fully there. But in doing so, I am not supportive or would have a hard time appreciating why Pleasant Green would be included in that and, 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 and in this overlay. If in fact, one of the, one of the pieces was just trying to preserve, let's say, the area from railroad area, from railroad, from railroad over to St. George's and then over to the right to, to Wayland. If we're trying to preserve that area, then plus over there by the, by Croze Park, I'm having a hard time of appreciating, appreciating how, how Pleasant Green sort of knits itself into, and into those, into the look field and vintage of those communities. But as a way of sort of figuring out, how do we preserve that? How do we give some, how do we give some oversight into development that, development that might go on in those areas? And again, this and also with the missing mirror, the, the, the size of the, the footprint is something that I'm more in line with, as Tim has mentioned, that it's around the twenty two hundred. I'm, I struggle with a five thousand square foot, um, footprint, given that even if you do three is, as Daniel brought up, we'd be looking at a fifteen thousand square foot structure there. So I, I'm, even in this area, I'm hoping I would be more supportive of a, of a fall, smaller footprint. Not including, not including present Pleasant Green, but absolutely appreciate what Tim is saying that really we really, and what, and what Rick is saying that maybe what really what's needed here is to do a historic district overlay. And then I have some questions and I would have some concerns about what does that do for those individuals who don't realize that, oh, if we're saying it's an overlay that they can opt into it, but not wanting to push people into having to maintain or to monitor, to, to to change their houses in a specific way, if that's not what they're trying to opt into. So if I've got a bungalow and I just want to add a sunroom onto it that's looking like my bungalow, I don't want to have to push a person through a very complex or burdensome process to get that done. But I do appreciate that what we're trying to do here is provide some, is provide some, some, uh, consistency and some and, and, and provides, provide room for these to be, for this area to be preserved. But I, not as I've said before, I'm not the, the square, the footprint I have some concern with. And also including Pleasant Green and I definitely have some concern with that. I would not support that. Rick? Rick?
I just quickly, I wanted to add because Rachel, you, you indicated at the end of the section on topic, this topic, whether further criteria should be provided for infill development. And I just want to be sure that I'm consistent here, which is something I've been talking about for a couple of years. I do think there's a need for spelling out exactly the criteria as specific as possible for infill development here. That's reassuring for the neighborhood and the community. And I think it can also serve as a prototype that can be used in other denser areas of the county. I'm thinking specifically a Broadway, um, in the Scottsville district, that it might be appropriate to be utilized there. And certainly it's a topic right now that the town of Scottsville is dealing with around the former tire factory with infill development. And whether that would be a template that the town could use. So I think there would be a number of benefits and rounding out the criteria and specifying them for infill development in this downtown district.
I would also add to, to just come along that while we say that for Croze and we say that for Scottsville, the Jack Jewett District has a number of, 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 of parcels that when we look at them, they could actually fall nicely and be, be, uh, be aided in their, in their, for, in their future development if there was in fact an infill. A sort of an articulated infill approach to infill development. So it's not just the, um, uh, our border, rural communities for that. Anyone else? Jenny? And before Jenny, before you go, I want to just get a nod from people. Uh, if Jenny is the last person to speak on this particular issue, uh, I'm going to suggest we take a five minute break. So Jenny, you have two minutes because I don't do hard math. So that we can, uh, stop at tw- at eight twenty and then come back at eight twenty five.
Yeah, I just wanted to add into the discussion about this area that, um, I guess for me, and maybe that's if we move forward with this, we could clarify the infill part because, you know, I understand there's some vacant properties in this area, but not many. So, I mean, we are talking about lots that have an existing dwelling on them for the most part. And so what we call infill and what isn't considered infill here, I think is really important. And the other comment I wanted to add that I had in my notes and didn't say was that, you know, there's a very real challenge in the majority of these neighborhoods, which are older, to um, have the roadway be wide enough. Um, there are some places where the road simply is not wide enough and there is nowhere to expand, forget about sidewalk. And so when we want to encourage, you know, there already is a possibility for redevelopment here. Or infill, I guess, at the, you know, already three to six is a possibility. I guess I want to put that out there for part of consideration as this goes forward to the board is that you're talking about all these older neighborhoods where, you know, there's real examples of projects that the county has that they want to push forward where part of the neighborhoods that are included around the, that go out from this area to the park. Um, there's a existing sidewalk, which is in terrible condition that the county wants to improve. But getting the right of way secured to do that has been difficult. And I know that's a very expensive project, but I, so I guess my point is that when we encourage development or even have the overlay say to go above the six, these are all neighborhoods that have, um, travel ways that don't meet VDOT standards in many cases. And there is, uh, it's a, there's an inability to gain the right of way or to go, you'd be going outside the right of way, taking property from people to do curb gutter sidewalk. And some neighborhoods have, it's, I would say there's a patchwork of sidewalks in this area. And so really to be robust, this area wants to become something that's more walkable and bikeable to downtown. And there's a real challenge there. So we need to acknowledge that. And I'll let us go to the break, but I guess I'd just like to say that, you know, I understand Rick's comment about this being a, you know, obviously that's our plan is to look out ten years. You know, our twenty ten plan is here we are in twenty twenty one, so it's talking about how we might change it. So I think the community really gets that, that we are looking ahead. And so all these choices and discussions are about what could happen and how we want to, you know, what we want to say about how that will happen. But to the point that Rick makes about the infrastructure piece, it, you know, it is the county's responsibility to help secure funding to put those things in place. You know, and if I lived in the village of Ryvanna, I would be paying close attention to this and seeing how the community has a feeling about something and seemingly that's ignored and that how there's, you know, I, I'm not asking for nothing to change or there to be no development until these certain projects are met. I think that's, you know, a really unfair expectation. But I do think the county has a part to play in this process before we move forward and before we create density in these places that it doesn't currently exist to secure some of that for the community. So I just wanted to make that comment that, you know, it does seem like what's fair for one place isn't fair for another. And I think that is also a goal of master planning is to be consistent. And staff brings that up in different areas where they want to make changes so that all across all our plans, it's, you know, what we say means the same thing. And I think that's important. Thank you.
Tim, did you want to say something before we went on our break, which is getting shorter by the moment?
Very briefly. I just want to note that, um, Nashville has shown us that you can have a historic district and you can have form based code layers. We could do the same thing with the downtown neighborhood overlay and historic district. And one of the benefits and one of the conflicts that's being set up, I see is, and Rachel, you, you mentioned it, the possibility, and certainly Karen did, the possibility of demolition. And a historic district ordinance does have, in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, does have the opportunity to have a demolition deferral. It's not taking away an entity's ability to ultimately tear something down. But it gives an opportunity for a timeout. And if there were an interested party that was willing to enter into the marketplace, there may be a possibility in certain cases to not have that demolition. So, uh, another reason for that historic district.
For the overlay.
For an overlay.
Okay. So it's, it's, uh, eight twenty three. Uh, you got five minutes, so you're at, uh, eight thirty two. I'm none. I'm just a guy with a few green, with a few dried out leaves on the ground still. I think we're here. Uh, I see Karen's spot. Daniel, when you walk through your, your stream, are you walking through a background or are you walking through a green screen?
Neither. Uh, Zoom is, Zoom is smart.
Okay.
Give it a, yeah, I guess a corporate count of this does, but.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I have my life on Zoom these days.
Oh, got it. Ready? Rachel, are you getting, are you, are we ready to move to your next question?
Yes, I think we're ready and Michaela is going to present the next section.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome back, everybody. We are switching gears in this next topic to talk about green space designations in Croze. And we are moving to, I'll, I'll be sharing advanced materials for the third of six questions tonight. This slide, uh, shows information about the two thousand and ten Croze master plan. And the green space designation in that plan refers to all of the existing and proposed parks, the public open space, environmental features, as well as active park areas. So as you can see on the left side of the screen, environmental features refer to stream buffers, the flood plain and steep slopes. Private open space is the green space required within residential developments, but is not accessible to the general public. And public parks are owned and maintained by the county. This green space designation refers to all of those things. Additionally, um, the two thousand and ten master plan has several parcels that are designated entirely as green space. Many of these same properties are within private ownership and are zoned residential. They are not planned for future public or private parks or open spaces and do not contain significant environmental features. This green space approach is not consistent with other Admiral County master plans or the comprehensive plan approach for concentrating development in development areas. Additionally, showing entire parcels as green space on the future land use plan, when these properties are not planned for future parks and do not have any critical environmental resources identified for protection can pose a couple of challenges for redevelopment potential. First, this approach can set false expectations for existing or future property owners who may be under the assumption that adjacent green space properties may not be developable when the underlying zoning may be in place to allow development. And secondly, existing or future property owners who own green space parcels may be unaware of this designation and may wish to pursue development in the future. So for this reason, or these reasons that I just stated, staff recommends restricting the parks and green systems designation to properties that contain visual buffers, environmental features and land plan for private open space. Public, publicly owned parks are categorized as public parks on the draft future land use plan. Staff has revised the future land use plan for several of the green space parcels to reflect this approach, focusing these changes on larger parcels or groups of parcels and specific property owner requests, which we'll discuss later tonight. The proposed changes to the green space parcels are described in attachment two of the staff report. The two thousand and ten future land use plan shows these parcels shown on your screen along Route two fifty as a mix of neighborhood density residential and green space. Draft updated future land use plan shows these parcels as residential, neighborhood density residential low and parks and green systems for areas that contain environmental features as well as a fifty foot visual buffer along Route two fifty. These parcels are all zoned route, uh, sorry, R one residential, which allows by right development of a density of one unit per acre. And for this area that we titled Brown, Brownsville along Route two fifty, we've heard feedback from at least one resident in this area that has a preference for keeping the parcels designated as green space. Now we're calling that parks and green systems in the twenty twenty plan to align with other, um, master plans. The majority of CCAC members would also prefer to keep the parcels current designation as green space. And much of the feedback that we heard related to this had to do with the density and infrastructure implications of this change. Another, um, area where there is a proposed parcel change related to the green space designation is tax map parcel fifty six dash thirteen, which is currently zoned R two residential. And it's partially, um, it partially contains environmental features. The two thousand and ten plan, which is shown on the, the top right of the screen, uh, shows a portion of this property designated as neighborhood density residential and the rest of the property as green space. The current draft, uh, staff recommends expanding this area of the property designated neighborhood density residential to include all of the areas outside of the environmental features. So on the lower right hand side of your screen, you'll see more yellow. That is all the area that is not, um, an environmental feature. This could allow an additional, this is approximate twenty three to forty six dwelling units over the current designation. The CCAC did not vote on this change. Though some committee members shared with staff that they had heard this property is in the process of being placed under conservation easement. Several members of the CCAC expressed their objection to proposed change for this reason. And staff has reached out to local easement holders. We're not currently aware of a pending easement on this property. Um, so that is the information we have to date. Overall, um, we've heard, um, several aspects to. several aspects to feedback about green space parcels, and it's mixed. We've consistently heard support for a refined approach towards green space designation, support for differentiation between environmental features and public parks. And we first began community engagement on this topic in early two thousand and twenty. However, there is a preference from some residents to retain the current green space designation in the areas of Crozay that we shared previously. The main concern is that changing the designation from green space to another land use category, such as neighborhood density residential low, could encourage additional development. As I mentioned on the past couple of slides, at the November thirtieth two thousand and twenty CCAC meeting, a majority of CCAC members did not support changing the Brownsville Road green space designation, and they did not vote on the catharsis lane change. So in conclusion, this information is related to question three in this effort. We're seeking feedback from the planning commission on which the following approaches towards a designating areas in Crozay as parks and green space is recommended. The first is to continue staff's current recommendations and update the parks and green systems designation of other smaller parcels that contain environmental features, but outside of them could be updated and that have not currently been reviewed per property owner request. Another option is to continue to limit green space designation review to larger areas and property owner requests, or finally retain the previous land use designations shown in the two thousand and ten master plan. And that concludes my presentation for question three. I'm happy to answer any questions as needed.
Thank you. So, who, Jenny, do you feel called to speak to this?
Um, sure. I, I'm gonna talk, I guess I'll provide feedback about this, but leave out the one property because that is a specific question later. Um, I, I, you know, I appreciate why it doesn't make a lot of sense to have that designation if it's going to cause confusion for people about what's around it or what could happen with this property if you live nearby. I guess, I, you know, I have, I don't, I don't know. I guess I feel like if for the properties that are on two fifty, you know, I don't see the big deal in giving this a different designation. Although I do think it, you know, could encourage development there. I do think it's a little confusing to have it marked as green space, but I think people who own properties in that area and people who live nearby are well aware that there's a buy right potential that already exists. But I do appreciate staff wanting to be more consistent with that. And then for the other property that you talked about specifically in here, the P three, I really think that staff should talk to the property owner, since these aren't specific requests and they're requests that staff have brought forward, because there's more to learn about that property and that area that I think would help guide where you're headed with that request. So those are my suggestions for those things. Thanks.
Next. Next, Rick?
I'd like to speak in support of the first one, updating the green space designation of the areas of these other smaller parcels that are outside of environmental features and have not been reviewed per property owner request. I think that makes a great deal of sense. And this is very well explained as to the reason for the change in the staff report.
Next, Tim?
I, I support that as well. I think that, that the route the staff is going down on this is, is much more clear. I remember from the Pantops master plan recently that there were the public members who weren't following it as closely as others were really surprised when they learned that there was a development that was planned for an area that was designated as, as potential open space. I do think that there are two, two other factors, and as we're moving into the comprehensive plan, maybe it's more appropriate, but I just want to mention them here. And that is that I think that if there are areas that make sense, like one of the next questions we're going to deal with, if it makes sense to have a public space there, then there needs to be a plan for idealized future acquisition for open space from the county. And then the question would be whether that should be showing up on the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan, whether it should be showing up in these area plans. But I know, Charles, you've, you've spoken to this, this question of whether it would be more reasonable to be projecting where there should be some open space. And I think that in effect is what has gotten us into the dilemma that I think that you all are shrewdly trying to correct here. So that's just one piece. And then the second piece is if we could have an opportunity in the next year to revisit the, the policy about net versus growth, gross density coming off of the areas that shouldn't be developed within a parcel. I think that if the folks in any of our growth areas had a better sense of whether there was going to be better protection of those and that it wasn't going to lead to density increases if, if if there was development in these natural resource areas, that they would be more comfortable in, in the long-range planning. So those are my questions, but in support of, of what you're suggesting.
Going back to Rick for a second before I move on.
Really quick, one, one thing I didn't add because I was just trying to cover one point is the biblical adage is that what the Lord giveth, the Lord taketh away. I think if the county taketh away some of the green space, there is a responsibility for the county to ensure where development takes place, there is more open public space available for an increasingly dense population living in Crozay. We do nothing with this proposal here tonight. We put it in the trash can. Over the next ten years, the density in Crozay will continue to go up. So I think one thing that would be helpful is if, in fact, you're going to take away green space, and I totally agree with doing that. However, I think it's incumbent on the county, therefore, on every one of these projects coming down the line, to ensure that there is more green space provided in that proposal.
Karen?
Okay, so just a couple overarching comments. One is that we have the same challenge coming upon us in Crozay that we are currently experiencing in the growth area around the city of Charlottesville, which is that we don't have enough green space. We, we keep growing and we're not keeping pace with public space, walking space, trails, et cetera. So I am actually not in support of a net decrease in green space. If the, if the county wants to spend the time to really create a green sort of master plan for Crozay, I know there, I know that there are parks and there's a network, et cetera. But to take another look at that and think about how all these spaces connect, I would very much support that and I'd be happy to assist with that. I would say, though, that there are other uses for green space besides taking care of environmental features. So I think what staff was referring to earlier was, you know, you say a greens, an area does not have green space, but it doesn't have a stream or wetland or steep slope. You know, it's not, it's not got a particular feature that we've designated as important. But if you are the person who lives down the street from that and it does become green space in the future, and that now provides walking space for you to go outside and recreate, then that becomes a, an important feature for you, even though ecologically, you know, we would all poo-poo that it's not that significant. But it might be very important to you. And if you look at the data on aging in place, then one of the number one reasons that people are able to stay in their homes is not just because of handicapped accessibility, disability accessibility and ramps, et cetera. It's also the ability to take a walk and reach green space without having to get in a car. And so if you want to research this further, the Trust for Public Lands, which is a nonprofit, has a lot of metrics and indicators on their website for looking at how much green space there should be per capita, how much, you know, how, how walkable your community is. As we talked about tonight, people not having sidewalks and not having places to take a walk. Having that future green space is really important. So I can't, you know, debate tonight as to whether this particular green space or that particular green space is important. I do understand the comments that have been made about the zoning that, you know, somebody might think that the comp plan says it's green space, but it's zoned for development. And then, you know, next thing you know, a development is going up there by right. So to sum up, I would like to not see a net decline in the amount in the acreage of green space that is available to Crozay. The second point is that I would like to see another look perhaps taken at the sort of master connectivity of the green space that is there. Sometimes a patch of green space can actually become an important connector for a bird, pollinator, or a person. So it might not, if you look at each parcel, in, in isolation, you don't see the big picture of the connectivity. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting very, very tired at this point because I've been at work since eight. I'm in the same chair I sat in since eight this morning, but I would, I would really, I'm going to quote without naming the person. A county staff person said to me years ago, before Crozay was developed as a growth area or designated as such, they wished they had had the opportunity to go in there. Who, this was a person who has a professional ability to do this and was a county employee. They wished they could have gone in and created a master green space plan before all the areas were designated for growth, because they could have created something truly spectacular. And so we have missed a lot of those opportunities, but I work with the city of Richmond and other cities to take parcels that were zoned for development and use them to add to parkland or to create new trail systems. So it can be done, even it may, when it may entail, say, taking down an older house, not a historic house, just an old house, and, and using that to then enlarge a park or to create a pocket park or to fill in the missing link that now creates a greenway. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go into professor mode and rant about connectivity and green space, but I really do want to emphasize that I don't want to see a net decline in green space. And I would like to see a coordinated plan with a look at how many Crozay restaurants, sorry, I told you, sorry, residents can walk to a green space from their house safely. That's, that's all I want to say on that topic for now.
Daniel?
Yes, I'd keep my comments short too, but I agree with clarifying this and the staff's approach and the, you know, group, parks and green systems. And so we don't create confusion of what's developable and, you know, someone moves in, they see a map because maps are you know, very, very powerful. And they're inaccurate. They're, they're, they're lead to nothing but confusion and, and concern. And so you think you live near something that you have green and then it goes away development. That's, that's not good for anybody. That being said, I will kind of piggyback on some of the other comments and say, because we're facing the same thing across the county and, you know, and, and the Rye District, where, where, as we increase density, and that's the goal in these growth development areas, how are we going to apply, you know, how, what is the role the county is going to take in helping ensure that we have these green systems? And that we have the ability to maintain them and make them open and accessible for all citizens. And so I think, you know, as we, as we look at this in the next phase, we're, we're going to grow. We are growing. We're going to grow. And we, we need to have a, a good approach to maintaining, preserving, and increasing the amount of green space in these development areas. So that's, I'll conclude those comments.
Other comments? Corey?
Just a plus one to Commissioner Firehawk. I think what I've seen, especially in light of COVID, is that the green space has been the lifesaver. Whenever I go out to Darton Toe Park, for example, is more people than I've ever seen in my life. And so I, I suspect that's not going to go away for quite some time. And so I want to see a decrease in, in the green spaces with quality of life.
So, so to close this off, I think, I, I support staff's recommendation that the parks and green spaces be designated as, as, as they're listed there. I will say, and I'm sure those of us who live in rural areas, it's funny how habit trails begin. So we live contiguous to Ivy Creek, natural to the park. And all of a sudden, some people started walking across our property to go to the park because someone misread the park map and said that that park lane goes across our property. Now, you know, I'm a nice guy when I need to be. But it's kind of unsettling to see people stand in your face and tell you, well, this is a park lane and this is green space open to everybody. When you're saying, no, this is not what this is. This is not what this has never been. And so I would go with staff with clarity helps and particularly in this environment ease some of the, the habit trails that people are, are putting out there during this period. Rachel, Michaela, did you get what you needed?
Yes, I think so. And we will come back
Keep going.
on, on more of this topic related to the conservation after. So this, this conversation was really related to the land use designation that we see the overlap and we will have more in the future. Next. And Ivy, is it Tori has our next question?
That's correct. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you all see that? Okay? Okay, great. So my name is Tori Kanelopolis, and I will be presenting the first question for topic number three, which is property owner request. And the first one is for Whitegate Farm. And there's a, part of the question is also about the adjacent neighborhood center. So this was a property owner request, and Whitegate Farm is this parcel, two parcels. The main one is located between Wickham Pond and Park Ridge along Route two forty. And it's currently designated green space in the two thousand and ten master plan. And then there's also this adjacent parcel to the northwest along Route two forty, which is designated light industrial. And the master plan contains specific language for this larger Whitegate parcel that it's intended to break up the appearance of continuous development on Route two forty. The property owner of these parcels approached staff in two thousand and eighteen to request a land use designation change to allow for development that was more consistent with the adjacent Wickham Pond development. And Whitegate is currently zoned rural area, the main parcel, which allows residential development up to point five units an acre. A portion of the property is within a stream buffer. And the property owner has submitted a rezoning request, which has been deferred pending this master plan update. So staff's recommendation with the two thousand and twenty update is a split designation between neighborhood density residential, middle density residential, and then parks and green systems for the area within environmental features, which includes the stream buffer and some preserve steep slopes, as well as a visual buffer along Route two forty. This would continue the land use pattern on the adjacent Wickham Pond development, which is also recommended for that split designation is currently split between urban density and neighborhood density residential. It would allow for a potential connection to Park Ridge Drive, which would significantly enhance connectivity for residents in this area. And this proposed designation is consistent with several Crozay land use goals, including providing a variety of housing types in Crozay and ensuring that new and infill development is consistent in scale and design with existing adjacent development. The second part of the question relates to the neighborhood center that is proposed. So during the January two thousand and nineteen workshop, staff introduced options for potential designations of activity centers in Crozay. And centers are intended to be the focal points of activity that serve the surrounding area. They typically have a mix of uses, a higher intensity of uses than surrounding neighborhoods, and are served by transit. Neighborhood centers are intended to have residential and small-scale commercial uses with active ground story uses, mixed-use buildings, and two to be, two to four stories in height. And the two thousand and ten master plan also included mixed-use centers. So staff's recommendation for a neighborhood center would have the center point on the adjacent Wickham Pond development. There's a, an undeveloped parcel within Wickham Pond along Route two forty shown there in the orange with the neighborhood center shown on top. Whitegate Farm would be within the quarter-mile walk shed, so it would be included within the center. And this designation is intended to reflect the small-scale commercial area approved with the Wickham Pond rezoning and emphasize connectivity with downtown and other areas of and emphasize connectivity with downtown and other areas of activity. And the Wickham Pond rezoning allows up to 16,000 square feet of non-residential uses in this block, including retail, commercial, and private schools. Neighborhood centers are also intended to provide opportunities for pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. And in the future, additional density in this area could allow for a potential transit stop. And the designation is also intended to align with the centered typologies established with the Places 29 and Pan Top's master plans. So feedback has varied during the process for Whitegate Farm. There's been support for providing the road connection to Park Ridge Drive. There's been mixed community support for the split designation throughout the process, but we've also heard a lot of concern with the potential for additional development to impact infrastructure. And at the most recent CAC meeting, a majority of members were opposed to the split designation shown of neighborhood density and middle density residential, but agree that the parcel should not be entirely green space and would support a lower density designation instead. And for the neighborhood center, a majority of the CAC was also opposed to this designation and concerned with possible competition with downtown. Staff has also heard support from the community for enhanced walkability in this area and support for connectivity to the downtown area, connecting to this area. So our question for the commission is if you all support the land use changes shown for Whitegate Farm properties or have a different recommendation? And if you support or have a different recommendation for the neighborhood center on the draft future land use plan? So I will go ahead and stop sharing my screen. Thank you.
I've got a, hold on please, I have a question for Andy and Charles. If this was an active proposal that's coming before the commission as a zoning, should we be engaging in this conversation right now without having, without seeing a plan?
Well, it's appropriate and, and an option for the commission to consider amendments to the comprehensive plan at any time. This is part, as, as the chairs aware, this is part of systematic review of the comprehensive plan. And so, and it's not inappropriate for the commission to be considering proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Comments? But, uh, thank you, Tori. Comments?
May I?
Jenny.
Okay, um, I, I guess I, I had a question for staff and I wondered if you could say, tell us, um, for Wickham Pond, that's the part that's developed. It shows on the 2010 plan as urban density residential, which is up to 12 units. How, what, what, how, how dense is that? Um, part of Wickham Pond that's developed that you show on the map, on the new map, and you also expand the middle density residential color.
That might take us a minute to look it up unless Tori, do you know it off the top of your head? I know we have it written down somewhere. It might take us to pull it up if you want to move on to other questions.
Yeah, I'll just finish my comments, but I would like to know because I felt like you said it earlier. And it was much more dense than I thought it was. So I'm going to base my comments on the notion that it's currently zoned for urban density residential, which is up to 12. That portion which is developed. And we know that that could be a little bit higher with bonus densities and stuff. I know it is a little bit, it's, it's pretty dense, but I didn't think it was, I thought you gave a number earlier that was like over 24. So maybe I misheard that.
Yeah, can I clarify real quickly? That was just the back portion of townhomes that had accessory units in them. Not all of Wickham Pond has accessory units. So I was just looking at one street in Wickham Pond, not the neighborhood.
That helps. So I guess, you know, one comment I'd like to make, just reading some of the stuff in the chats as I was able to catch up a little bit is, you know, there's one comment in there that sort of asked like, you know, we obviously Croze is a growth area. Is Croze going to, you know, allow for development to happen here as it needs to and all the other development areas of the county? And I guess to that, I would say that we have, we've taken on a huge amount of development. And as you see here in our discussion tonight, there's still properties actively being developed and they are quite dense. We're producing a lot more numbers. So that's my response to that question. I absolutely think this property needs to have a land use designation. And what, I think what, what I see is having it be something like, I, I like the split idea that staff has, but I would say, you know, have it be a little more dense up next to Wickham Pond where it can expand over and then have it, you know, go down to the, but I would say at the most, having that urban density residential at 12 and then having the neighborhood density at three to six. In response to the question about the center and having it be a neighborhood center, I don't, you know, I don't really understand that because I guess the location, you know, I, I would first argue that we shouldn't even be trying to encourage more commercial development outside of what's happening in the centers we already have in downtown. And this area, you know, where you're trying to push some more density here, you know, I think it could tolerate a little bit, but it, you know, it desperately wants to connect to downtown. And people really are willing to bike that distance. And, you know, walking is pretty hard, but I think I just, I don't see, you know, with all the money that's going into downtown and with the county trying to partner to make something happen down there, I, I struggle to see how we would develop this new center out there and encourage more commercial development that takes away from downtown. And then not having it be really accessible to downtown when it wants to be is a concern for me. And I guess if you were to have to put a center point out there, I don't really understand why you would put it in the location that you're showing it and not more over where you already have some commercial activities. There's a Centerra satellite place for doctor's offices and there's a daycare. So I guess if there were to be some commercial development, I would think it would kind of center around that, which is already there. So those are my comments about the the category for land use and then the development of another center. Thank you.
Next, Rick.
And I want to echo in some ways and, and what Jenny raised as a question and address it. I do think it's important here that we're clear about the fact that we're talking about a neighborhood service center, not a village center. That's my first point. The second point that I want to raise is I like the split. I think the split is totally appropriate. And I like how you've done that in more than one locality in Croze and trying to utilize where the space is available to ensure that there will be growth potential residentially and then seeking to preserve the high natural resource values that are on that piece of property as well. I do want to give you a real case study of the danger of putting a center off of a major highway. Where the center is proposed here appears to be at some distance from Three Notch Road. And I wanted to share, we'll share more with the commission this evening. But last night, the Village of Ravanna CAC had a meeting with Robinson Developments' lead developer, Tim Culpepper. And the question was asked, given that Ravanna Village has set aside up to 60,000 square feet of commercial development, has there been any signees yet on lease arrangements for the property? The answer is no. And the reason is COVID, number one. Number two, because the center in Ravanna Village is off of Route 250. There's no visibility for anyone driving by. And where the center is proposed here will also be away from Three Notch Road. So Jenny, your concern about and your concern and residents' concern that somehow setting up a, a neighborhood service center is going to drain economic vitality from downtown. I don't see that being the case because it's not as though we're going to see three casinos go in here. The Corey Clayburn Casino is going up and the Julian Bivens Casino will be going up and the Daniel Bailey Casino will be going up. So I don't see that happening. I do see, as we're seeing potentially in Ravanna Village, they're looking at a daycare and medical users in that commercial space. You know, if perhaps there is a coffee shop there, maybe that would service the needs of Wickham Pond. Maybe that will yet service the needs and interests of people living in Ravanna Village and the surrounding community. But I think we need to be realistic that a neighborhood service center off of Three Notch Road is not going to become suddenly a shining beacon of economic activity that's going to raise the Dow Jones Industrial Average as a result of its existence. So I do want to come in, in favor of the split and just say it should be a neighborhood service center and just be mindful that it may not be a magnet for business to be attracted to because it's not on Three Notch Road. Cautionary note.
Next. Tim? Tim? Tim, then Karen?
Conceptually, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what staff is after, but I think that now we're getting to the level that Karen referred to in, in her opening statements, that we have had amazing input from community members with ideas on ways to find this and think about this differently. Jenny referred to some of those. And I just, again, council's advice notwithstanding, I think this is specific enough for what we're seeing, that I defer to staff and the community on this.
Anyone else? So I will just, I will just sort of step in and remind us that when we were looking at Southwood, we had a similar conversation about a neighborhood center. And how in Southwood, we were all gung ho and very supportive of that because it would keep people off of, doing what Karen's shaking her head. You know, saying that we, well, let me finish. That we bought the idea, whether or not there was a full support on it, we bought the idea. And so I just want us to be consistent on each side of the county. So I'm, I'm actually, I, I thought the, the part, the, the partitioned approach to this was, was a, was a a reasonable solution. I, I also believe that business will drive whether or not, as Rick has said, whether or not people actually lease the space. Business people will make decisions on whether or not they want to lease the space or not. And so that doesn't feel like that's my role as a, as a, as a planning commissioner, but it's whether or not that's a a set of services that might be useful for that particular community as it builds out. So I would add my voice that as it, when it comes, and if it ever comes, well, we will give it a good, hard, hard look at it, but the principle of should that happen there? Yeah. Anyone else? Next.
Okay, we're ready to move on to our next question, which is in the category of property owner request. And the property is Railroad Avenue. Sorry, I was on the wrong screen. So three, question five is the Railroad Avenue parcel. So this property to orient an area shown here, France on Railroad Avenue. There are two existing homes on the property, one here and one here. An area of woods and there are some, a small area of steep slopes within these woods. And the wooded area also provides a visual buffer around an RWSA water tank that's on a separate parcel behind the property. So the 2010 master plan designates the entire parcel as green space. So it's one of the green space parcels we had talked about, but this is also property owner request, the property owner approached staff at one of our workshops and asked us to look at the designation on the property. It is zoned rural area and as I'm slopes on the property. So the change that we are proposing with the 2020 plan applies a neighborhood density residential low designation on a portion of the property shown here on this map. So it encompasses the area with the two residences. It saves the areas where the slopes are in the back of the property as well as that large stand of trees that provides that buffering on around the water tower that's shown here. This is to reflect the approximate development potential of the property based on the rural area zoning, were to be clustered close to the street and closer to the development area and maintaining the parks and green system for the woods. So there's been mixed support from the community with the changing designation on this one as well. Same concerns as we've voiced previously about kind of encouraging additional development and density. And at the November meeting, the majority of the CAC did not support this change on the property. And so our question tonight is if you support staff's recommended change as shown on the draft land use map that we shared this evening. I will stop sharing and open it up for questions or comments.
Jenny.
Um, I do support the change that staff is recommending. And I think, you know, having the owner make that request and, you know, kind of our previous conversation about having these areas labeled as green space. But, and I also, I see that you show this and you acknowledge it in your report, but I think, you know, I just would like to say how much it is important that there's a split designation and that, you know, there's some critical slope and then the buffer that's left there, the trees that will hide the view that people would have of the water tank is important. It looks like you're, you know, designating a huge, a pretty good amount of space to be, you know, to stay as parks and green space, I think is the new term, parks and green systems. And I would just, I just hope that they're, you know, leaving as many trees there as possible because we know that all over and especially here in Croze, it's really windy that leaving more than what we think would be really good if the intention is to have a visual buffer for the really giant water tank that's there. So, but I, I support what you're suggesting to have happen here.
Karen?
I would just-
Karen then Rick.
Just briefly though, I would note that if you look at the the 2010 future land use map, there's that ribbon of green going along the creek. And then there's this chunk of green space that would be designated. But it could connect across that parcel. In other words, you could connect to that ribbon of green space along the creek. Because if you, if you want to study ecology, if you disconnect green spaces, they're more susceptible to disturbance. They are more likely to have species decline. And here we have a, to me, a golden opportunity to make a little stripe of green that would at least provide that connectivity instead of creating an isolated chunk of green by itself. It would be a really easy connection to make. So I would only some, personally support it if that, that little green line could be extended to make a more connected system. That's a, a no brainer to me. It was my magic green wand.
Rick.
Karen, I'm sure you saw this past week that there was a report issued that where they built a bridge for wildlife to be able to cross over a highway that it proved to be exceptionally effective in allowing species to migrate. So your point is very, very well taken here as we look at G3 on page 11 and going in a southwesterly direction to try to achieve some connectivity between one green space and another. But I do think here, the question before us, do we like the split? I think the split makes sense. But with a caveat that we should prevail upon the owner of G3 to achieve ecosystem connectivity to the southwest of the site. And I know we're getting into specifics, but I think that's something that it's appropriate at this point to just raise that concern as we go forward when we look at any potential land use application.
Next, anyone? Tim?
I think my colleagues have said it. Well, I, I think that it reiterates and Rachel, you might remember because you were so involved in it. But in Places 29, there was- because you were so involved in it, that in places 29, there was all this discussion of taking the waterways, take even the intermittent stream areas and really plotting that and letting that become a backbone for development. And it seems to me that there really needs to be a layer in each area plan and in the comprehensive plan that shows what that idealized system that we're talking about would be. And, and to Julian's point about ownership, I, I think that that's a very real one in our country and the way we feel about our personal property rights. I think it needs to be clear that we're not, unfortunately, I say unfortunately from my standpoint, that we're not like the UK where we have these open space networks that cross private lands. But I think that from the ecological standpoint, that, that both Rick and Karen were talking about. And by the way, Rick, these were being put in Montana in 1992. You know, I don't know why this all of a sudden has become a big, a big discussion point now because Montana DOT was paying for it back then because of the migration patterns in Montana. And up into Canada, which was doing it, it's adjacent to territories and we're doing it even earlier. But the point nonetheless is that I think that we need to show this on the map. But at the same time, given what staff has said and what we have talked about, about the misconceptions of seeing it on this development map, that's where it belongs. It needs to be an ideal that we're working towards though. And it needs to be something that's called out to every developer, that it's not just that one piece of their land, but the connectivity of that. It is the natural system variant on the connectivity between the developments that we were hoping that we could at least have in a pedestrian bicycle manner. It's, it's the equivalent thereof in the natural systems.
My understanding, Tim, in Montana, now they're collecting a, they've set up a toll road and, and they're collecting fares from wolves heading south.
Next. Anyone else? So I would add that I support staff's recommendation on this too. So are we going, are we going to old, are we going to?
Yes, that's our, is it, if it's okay to go ahead and-
Please.
Start that, sure. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again. Hopefully that will come up. So this is our final topic and question this evening. Another property owner request for Old Trail Village. So staff received a request from the developer to look at the current land use designations in Old Trail with this master plan update and see if we could provide more consistency between the uses and densities allowed per the Old Trail rezoning with the revised land use designations. So the Old Trail rezoning was approved in 2005, allowing between 1,600 and 2,200 dwelling units and up to 250,000 square feet of non-residential uses. And then the developer put in a rezoning request in 2015 to revise the minimum number of dwelling units down to 1,000. And that request was approved and the expected build out is about 1,200 units. So most of Old Trail has been built out or has site plan approval and is under construction. And there are two main areas that do not have site plan approval or have not begun to build out. So that would be the first area is this kind of central area with blocks 26 and six. And then the other area is along Route 250, so blocks 19, 24, 25, 33 and 34. And tonight we'll be talking more about blocks 19 and 26. So most of staff's recommendations with the 2020 updated categories are intended to align with the approved densities and uses allowed with the Old Trail rezoning. So some of these changes include replacing the 2010 mixed use designation with an updated mixed use designation, changing the designation of several blocks from neighborhood density and urban density to middle density residential, and changing the designation of several blocks from urban density residential to community mixed use. Old Trail is also designated as a village center, which is a distinct and secondary center to downtown. It should be noted that the 2010 master plan also identifies Old Trail as a mixed use center, but does not show the centers and walksheds on the map. Staff's recommended land use designations do not change any of the permitted uses or densities in Old Trail. And a change to the uses and densities would require a rezoning, which would require Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors public hearings. And the CAC discussions have mostly focused on two areas in Old Trail, which will be discussed in the next slides. So the first area is block 26 in Old Trail. As I mentioned, this block is not yet developed. It's between Ashlar and Golf Drive. And it's currently designated urban density residential. The Old Trail zoning allows between 20 and 150 dwelling units in this block, which results in a maximum density of 27 units an acre. And it allows up to 20,000 square feet of non-residential uses, which include restaurants, hotels, retail stores and pharmacies. The urban density designation does not match the allowable densities or non-residential uses. And staff's recommendation is a community mixed use designation, which would better align with the potential density and allowable uses. The second area that the CAC is focused on in Old Trail is block 19. So block 19 is just behind Route 250 along Old Trail Drive and next to the Henley Middle School and Brownsville Elementary School. It's designated neighborhood density residential. And the Old Trail zoning allows between 12 and 90 dwelling units. There are no non-residential uses permitted in this block except for a farm stand. The property owner has submitted a rezoning request in this block for a 90,000 square foot sports facility. And per the rezoning that is under review, the 90,000 square feet of non-residential uses would be limited to a recreation facility or a community center and not allow other non-residential uses. So staff's recommendation for this block would be a split between neighborhood density residential and institutional. An institutional designation would align with the adjacent institutional designation on the school's property and would recommend the type of use that's proposed with the sports facility. And the neighborhood density designation would align with the underlying zoning if the developer instead chose to pursue the current by right uses. So it should be noted that the land use map has not been updated yet to reflect this designation. So a reference draft designation is shown to the right on the screen. There's been a later request that's coming from the developer as well, which is to adjust the development area boundary on the western edge of Croze. So this request, as you can see in this left image, the current development area boundary goes through one of these buildings and leaves out the other. So this is the clubhouse and restaurant that are at the end of Golf Drive. And this area is technically outside of the Old Trail rezoning as this clubhouse and restaurant were approved with a special separate use, uh, special use permit. And both of these buildings are on public utilities. So the developer requested to adjust the boundary and then designate this area as community mixed use. So staff is supportive of adjusting the boundary to include both buildings, which is shown conceptually to the right. However, staff would recommend a parks and green systems designation to be more consistent with the current green space designation. And staff sees this as more of a cleanup than a significant development area boundary adjustment. So staff has heard support from the community for a sports facility on block 19, but has also heard concern that other non-residential uses not be allowed along this area of Route 250. A majority of CAC members at the most recent meeting did not support the community mixed use designation for block 26. We're concerned that it could result in more intense additional development. The village center appears to be appropriate as a designation for Old Trail from the feedback we've gotten from the community throughout the process. But there is still concern that it may not be sufficiently secondary to downtown. There's been mixed feedback on whether the previously determined land use designations for Old Trail should be altered with this process. And the development area boundary change has not yet been brought to the CAC for review, as this was a newer request. So our final question for the commission is if the commission supports the land use changes within Old Trail as shown on the future draft land use plan, we welcome your comments and questions. Thank you.
Rick, Rick then Jenny.
Yeah, Mike, I, I have one question, Tori, and that is if you'd go back to your last illustration for the clubhouse extension of the development area line.
Does that show up okay?
Yes. So we're looking to the right here with the black line. Where does that black line go? I see it heading north. Does it shoot an azimuth? Due north to where?
So I can stop sharing and pull up a map that's more zoomed out if that's helpful. But the quick answer is it just goes up to the property line to the north and then comes back and reconnects with the parcel. It's not including any other buildings with that line adjustment.
Well, in other words, what you're saying is it goes along the property line, i.e. the golf course.
It, it's going through the middle of this property, but then connects with the property boundary to the north. It doesn't extend all the way out to the west to include the entire golf course.
But I think, I mean, I, I'm just concerned about signing off on a potential. We're not making that decision. We're just giving a recommendation. But I do think it would be helpful for you to have a more definitive map of exactly where this expanded development area will be. Because if it just encircles where they need the additional jurisdictional area inclusion for the expansion of the club, the clubhouse, I, I don't have a problem with that. But if all of a sudden that line shoots to the north, we have indirectly expanded the development area here. If the golf course should ever fail for any reason, and golf unfortunately is not a increasingly popular sport, although COVID has, has managed to put new life into this sport. But in a post-COVID world, we're going to see golf courses continue to fail nationwide. But if that land were to revert back to be developable because it's in the development area, I think it's useful for us to know where the line ends. So that, that's just something, I'm happy to say yes to that with a proviso that before we actually formally approve it, we have a more accurate map before us. Otherwise, it's yes, yes, and then yes as well, but with a more defined map.
Jenny?
I, I definitely support the first change that staff talked about for block 26. And the reason why is because I think staff already pointed out, and as we talked about before with the middle density recommendation that's shown in other places in Old Trail, that, that type of development that, you know, would come along with that change is already allowed in the code of development. So anything that's already allowed, I don't know why we would disagree with it. And it's being more honest to show it, you know, it was, what it can turn into. So I don't have any issue with that. I appreciate that staff have, um, for block 19, I think the way it was presented to the community and the CCAC was potentially changing the zoning there or the land, not the zoning, the land use, um, sorry, I'm getting tired, um, changing the land use to allow for the sports facility that people were, you know, favorable and wanting to hear more about that. People liked that idea, but it was opening it up to become all these other things if the sports facility doesn't actualize. And so I like the approach that staff has to have the institutional use partly and then having the, the residential piece that's there. And then I guess just the last comment I have about the clubhouse and restaurant, you know, I absolutely don't think we should be expanding or adjusting the development area boundary. And I think that this can stay parks and green systems. It's already there. It already though, doing what it's doing. I don't know why on earth we would need to suddenly change our line to include it when it already exists and it has been there for many, many years. So I would just give it that designation and leave it alone. Thanks.
Anyone else? Tim?
I, I guess I sort of questioned the, the, the reason for, for doing the whole, for doing this whole thing because it's so far along in its development. I, I guess we want to have as much, show as much reality as, as we can with these. So I'm supportive of, of staff, staff changes, but I think that Jenny's point, last point is well taken.
Okay. Others? Question, Tori. So on parcel on block 19, if this is a split zoning with the right hand portion next to the school being, what are we calling that institution? And, and that happens when this comes forward, does that mean that it will only be something that falls into that, that framework? So you couldn't put another, you couldn't, or would, or would we be having a conversation about shifting that back?
So the intent of the split designation is to recognize that there's the existing underlying zoning for residential. So that hatch part, that's neighborhood density, if the developer wanted to go with the by right use. And then the institutional hatch designation on top doesn't specify exactly where those uses would need to go. There is the visual buffer along Route 250. But it would be if the rezoning for that type of sports facility was pursued, it would be more in line with that institutional designation.
Would we see that at some point? Would the commission and supervisors see this private, private sports club?
Through the rezoning process.
That's, is that, that's how we would see it?
That's correct.
Okay, alright.
I think we have seen it, but it might've been a work session, um, getting feedback. But it's been, it's been in front of us.
It has? The sport, the, the private sports center, it's like a place up in Northern Virginia that, that has gotten a lot of, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'd like to know about that because I haven't seen it and I've been looking out for it. But, but if we're going to see it as a rezoning, I'm fine with, with, with the comp plan being changed. I just, I, I'm just, I guess what I was feeling uncomfortable with, are we slipping in a commercial benefit to this land owner without us having the ability to have a legislative review on it? And Tori has just assured me that we would be able to have a legislative review on it.
Sure. So just to clarify, the only uses that the developer could do now would be up to 90 dwelling units and a farm stand. So even if we change the designation to include institutional uses, they'd still need to go through the whole rezoning process to allow for that use.
Thank you. Then I'm good. Anyone else? Back to you, Rachel. Oh, Jenny, did you want to say something?
Um, I, you know, um, I know everyone's ready to go. And I think we've worked through all the questions. I guess, you know, maybe I just need to email some of the stuff I have to staff because, you know, I get that there's, um, you know, very specific questions about, from the work session tonight. But in the maps and the tables and the graphs and the charts, there's, you know, some changes of substance here that we aren't being asked about tonight. And I don't want to go through all that. And, you know, honestly, I feel like maybe there's some here that I haven't even picked up on yet. But one that I do want to bring up and just put this out for the commission to consider is that on the 2010 land use map, everywhere where there's light industrial, staff are showing that change to the office R and D flex light industrial. And so, and I wonder about that when I read through what's allowed there and that there's a residential component that's a secondary use, six to 34 units. And it just makes me wonder, you know, I, I kind of get why you want to change a category to maybe be a little more flexible, to have something happen here. This is a place that we want to have employment. But it, when I think back on my time as a commissioner and all the places around the county where we've, you know, had the board consider expanding the growth area to create more LI to create more LI land, and we've heard over and over that there's this lack of inventory on the LI land. You know, it kind of makes me wonder about why we would change that and allow for, you know, the secondary uses to occur. And I don't know if staff can speak to that, if it's a change that you're making, you know, countywide as you go through and do these plans. But it just strikes me as a little odd when, you know, one thing I've taken away from a lot of these meetings is there's not enough, you know, land that's just for, um, employment purposes that has that LI designation. So, um, I, that is something that I wonder about when it shows up here. All that land is switched to another color and it has a whole new set of things that could happen on it. So I just wanted to put that out there and I won't go through all the other things that I see that are changes here.
Rachel? Anyone else have a? I know you, 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 I would assume, Rachel, you want to, you want to wrap a little bit up of this up. You've heard a lot. We've gone.
I think our next step is to, to, uh, summarize and package that up for the board. We'll be coming back to the commission, uh, for a couple more work sessions on different topics. And then a last work session where we're kind of wrapping the whole draft together for you all to see how the parts work together. So be your last, um, time talking about this topic. And that's how we prepared for this evening, so.
And you'll be going back to the community too, won't you?
Correct. We'll continue to, uh, meet with the, the CAC regularly as well as providing opportunities, virtual opportunities for now, um, for, uh, the larger community to participate.
So Charles, this is what you do when you don't give, when you give us these big breaks. You know, so everybody, if you, if you're all dead on your feet, you can blame, uh, Charles Rapp for that because he, 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 you know, and so Rachel and, and Michaela and Tori, you blame your boss for us, uh, being all dragged out right now. Because I can see it in everybody's face. Anything else that anyone would like to say on this particular issue for the, for the good of the cause?
I'll just say I appreciate everybody's, uh, input tonight. It's, this is a lot to unpack. I know, uh, it's hard to kind of pull it apart. Uh, and then there's a lot of details in it. Uh, but I think we've, we've gained some really good feedback tonight that'll help us continue to, uh, work through this plan, so.
Okay. Uh, do you want to give us a, an update on what happened with our, uh, are there any committee reports? I guess I should go there. Are there any committee reports? Rick?
I did want to report on two things that I thought the Planning Commission would like to know about. The application for Greasy Hill is before the board a week from tomorrow. The applicant has the same application with only one change in it, which is in a proffer number six climate action. They are proposing to, the owner must install or cause to be installed a minimum of twenty thousand watts, which is two hundred kilowatts of photovoltaic solar panels in the project. There is no change in terms of the density. And it stays at a hundred and sixty units. So that is the only change that the board will see, other than what the Planning Commission saw. I do want to also quickly tell you about the Village of Ravanna meeting last night. I already made reference to the commercial district. The full build out of, uh, Ravanna Village is going to be three hundred and forty overall units. Um, Neil Williamson is probably listening to this. And I know this will be ammunition for him to say, well, the development area should be expanded. Um, however, the primary reason why those number of units are far less than the six hundred that were approved by the board in two thousand and seven is number one, a change in Army Corps of Engineers qualifications and stipulations regarding both navigable waters and which included the streams there and also the wetlands on the site. Uh, this site in, uh, the village of, in, in the Village of Ravanna, where Ravanna Village is, uh, has a lot of wetlands and streams in it. And the second reason is that the market doesn't have an interest in townhomes. There's the only viable housing that they felt they would be able to sell was going to be single-family housing. Now, you know, one of the reasons why affordable housing, though there is provision for affordable housing units there, realistically, we're not going to see it happen because there's no transportation there, uh, out to Ravanna Village. So lacking transportation, you're not really going to be able to have appealing affordable housing. Interesting enough, a number of the residents that have gone in there, the, once the people who purchased the property, they have put solar units on top. So they are abating their annual energy costs by taking advantage of the southern facing of the property and picking up some solar value from it. So I just wanted to let you know that the overall level is going to be below the four hundred that the Planning Commission and the board approved in twenty sixteen, I guess it was, twenty, twenty fifteen, that's right, for this project. And that's the reason why. And that's all there is from me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Karen?
Um, just briefly, uh, this is regarding the ACE Committee acquisition of conservation easements. Um, we, we are not having committee meetings right now, but several of us are working on, uh, developing an additional ranking criteria for future easements that incorporate some of the priorities espoused in the biodiversity action plan, uh, as directed by the Board of Supervisors. And I did some work on that plan, so I'm well familiar with it. We spent about ninety minutes on that this morning. The CIP does not include, uh, funding in this next round for the ACE program due to the, uh, financial uncertainty associated with the pandemic. But nevertheless, we're continuing to work on the criteria. And we're hopeful that we will have funding, uh, restored at some point in the future and also looking into other grant opportunities. That's all.
Anyone else? Charles, what do we need to know?
Um, last Wednesday, the board adopted ordinances supporting staff's recommendation and this commission's recommendations for the two agricultural and forestry districts, Batesville and High Mowing. And, uh, they also, uh, approved a special use permit for Seminole Trail Auto Dealership, the Games Close Commission, this with the same recommendation for approval, uh, for outdoor sales, storage and display.
Thank you. We're gonna have a car alley on twenty-nine. Just wish it was a vehicle that, you know. Daniel, we're not, we're not gonna have one? We're not? Okay. It feels like we're getting a car alley on twenty-nine with us, you know, it is what it is.
That wasn't disagreement. That was. Yeah. That was not, that was not an, that was not a head shake and disagreement. That was a head shake and resignation.
Okay. Rick, what'd you say?
I said it, a minimum will, that minimum will have a thousand points of light.
All right. Yes, Tim?
On my many years, like Karen, I'm not going to say how many that I have been in Charlottesville, Altonburg. It's been fascinating to watch the automobiles move back and forth from twenty-nine North to Pantops. Twenty-nine North and twenty-nine North.
Although I will say that the, that the Pantops dealership seemed to be going truly up market. I'm not saying anything about twenty-nine, but I can say something about Pantops. It's a different, it's a different price tag up there right now than it used to be. Um, anyone else? Folks, thank you. You've been troopers. And, uh, well, Charles?
Got to look at you for a couple of weeks.
We're, we're gonna be looking at you sideways if you do this again anytime soon to us. Uh, otherwise we'll see each other on Groundhog's Day. Stay safe. Be very aware of what's going on around you because, you know, we're one of those places where people could be foolish. So just be very safe and watch, watch our numbers because they're moving at a rate up that I certainly don't want to, don't want to miss any of you. Don't want to get any notice that you don't feel well in the next few weeks. So just be safe. And in your case, Corey, just get some sleep. All right. See y'all on February the second. Bye-bye. And thank you.
Bye-bye.